Good afternoon. I'd like to call the City Council Meeting, February 3, 2015, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call a roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
And then, item number one?
Employee Recognition Service Award Pins.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, each month we like to recognize city employees who've achieved certain milestones with the city. And this year, I'd like to read some names, and then we have one person who's here in person to receive their pin. With 10 years of service, Chelsea Swanson, Assistant Planner, Public Works Department; Joe Gonzalez, Facilities Maintenance Supervisor, Public Works Department; and Mary Lou Chavez-Sonobria, Waterfront Maintenance Worker One, in the Waterfront Department. With 15 years of service, Adrian Gutierrez, Police Officer in the Police Department; Linda West, Senior Public Works Inspector, Public Works Department; and Sean Martin, Water Treatment Plant Operator Three at the Public Works Department. With 25 years of service, Randy Webb, Survey Technician Two, Public Works Department. And with 35 years of service, Jose Marquez-Pep Marquez, Water Distribution Supervisor, Public Works. He will be here next month to receive his pin in person. And here to receive her pin in person with 35 years is Sarah Dunn, Senior Library Technician with the Library Department.
Come on up, Sarah.
Sarah Dunn began working at the Santa Barbara Public Library in 1979, shelving books as an hourly page. Within a year, she became a full-time employee and was soon promoted to Circulation Supervisor. Sarah then supervised the library system's interlibrary loan unit for over 10 years before becoming the Technical Services Unit Supervisor overseeing the processing and cataloging of all new materials. Sarah's current assignment includes a focus on defining, gathering, recording, and reporting statistical information. She brings a deep understanding of library data and a keen eye for statistical analysis. Library managers and supervisors depend on her as the Library Department's P3 advisor. In addition, she has provided information about the Santa Barbara library system for both the 2013 and 2014 Digital Inclusion Survey, a detailed national report about public libraries and digital services. Her work also includes serving as liaison with the Black Gold Cooperative Library System staff, monitoring the business of checking out more than 1.5 million items to the public of California's Central Coast region. Sarah was in charge of the original 1985 conversion of the library card catalog to the online catalog. In the 30 years since, she's played a key role in every catalog software update, upgrade, or replacement. She's currently working with the evidence-based collection management tool integrated into the catalog to evaluate parts of the collection and determine ways to better serve the public. Sarah's diligence, precision, and dedication to getting the details right produce an ongoing public benefit seen in the electronic catalog but seldomly publicly acknowledged. Sarah's worked under three library directors: Robert Hart, Carol Kader, and current Director Irene Macias. Sarah, it's great pleasure that we honor you today for your 35 years of service to the City of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the City Council, and the citizens of Santa Barbara, and your fellow employees, I congratulate you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I don't know which direction to talk in here. I have enjoyed my long service with the City of Santa Barbara and with the public library. I believe the public library is as important a part of the community infrastructure as our roads, our buildings, our pipelines, our electricity, everything. The library helps the community find itself, learn about itself, entertain itself, and I've just been very, very proud. I'm very proud to be a public employee, which isn't always the most popular thing to be nowadays. And I'm also very, very proud of all of the staff members who are here today, and all of those who are back at the library, and all of those I've worked with through all these years. And they're all sitting over here. Not quite all of them. We do still have the place open, but a few of them were able to come down here. And once again, I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. I think I have a button somewhere that says librarians are the original search engines, so that's a... Thank you for that. Okay, item number two.
2015 Historic Landmarks Commission Design Awards.
Great. Mr. Lamone.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, I'm very happy today to come forward and recognize our recipients for our Historic Landmarks Commission Design Awards. This program has been in existence since 1985, with the first awards being granted in 1986. These awards are either granted by the ABR or the Historic Landmarks Commission. The last awards were issued in 2013. This year, the HLC has elected to undertake the design awards separately from the ABR, since the awards are all in El Pollo Viejo or involve historic resources. In addition, the HLC has reestablished a new preservation award category specifically called the Edwards Plunkett Award for exemplary renovation/restoration of a historic structure. The award winners were selected by reviewing remodel projects and new buildings constructed throughout the city to determine projects or individuals that deserve the recognition. The four award categories are here, and we're going to ask the mayor to come down to help award these categories. The first category that we have is the St. Barbara Award. These awards are fabricated using Sartile tile and a bronze inset. And our first award recipient is the St. Barbara Award, given to the individual who has provided outstanding service to the community to enhance and preserve the built environment. And this year's award winner goes to Brian Cornell. So I'd like to ask Brian come up and have Don Sharp. I'd like to just give a little brief example of the types of buildings that he's recognized for designing in his extinguished career. These are examples of buildings that have been built in El Pollo Viejo, and I think this is considered a lifetime achievement award, the Hall of Fame of the city's design. So we applaud you for that. These are landmark buildings. They're going to be landmarks. That's the criteria that sometimes our subcommittee uses. Here, you can see the type of attention to details, the composition, the high-quality design elements he incorporates. These are the best examples with our EPV compliance guidelines. And again, this is his newest version of building El Pollo Viejo, the Alma del Pueblo condos in the Santa Barbara Public Market with his firm Cornell and Delitis. And I suppose at one point, we're going to come back and look at this building for another award. Thank you very much, Mr. Cornell.
Thank you, Bill. Don, I'm highly honored to receive this. I just want to say that, you know, I'm very lucky to do what I do in this beautiful city. And none of these could happen without incredible teams. It's not something that I did myself, so this is to the team. Thank you.
The next award is the George Washington Smith for exemplary architectural design excellence, and that award goes to the Nu Vic Theater remodel rehabilitation by PMSM Architects. And I'll have Mr. Mahan come and present that award. Come on forward. What's great about this project was that there was a design to improve this former auditorium, to renovate it and bring it forward to today's standards. And as you can see from the examples here, this is what it looked like. The Nu Vic Theater incorporates a new entry and ability to have this use be continued in existence for a true state-of-the-art theater. This is the extent of the renovations that occurred inside the theater. We also had a design challenge, which is how do you design an addition of a fly tower and still retain its historic significance? As you can see, this incorporates the standards that are required in El Pollo Viejo while still maintaining the vertical space and lifts to allow for the lift stage scenery and equipment above the stage. So that was a 55-foot-tall addition to that building, and we think they did an admirable job to retain some of the historic significance of this building shows to the community. And here, you can see how it's brought back life to this building. So we thank you for that addition to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. It does take a large team of people to complete a project like this, and I'd like to thank the city on behalf of that team, my colleagues at PMSM Architects, all of our specialty engineers and consultants, our general contractor Skipper Construction, and all of their subcontractors. We're honored to receive this award for the Nu Vic Theater. At PMSM, our motto is that we're dedicated to projects that enrich the community. I love being able to practice architecture in Santa Barbara, and it's been so wonderful to work with Ensemble and everyone on their building committee, and it's such a great project to be part of. Thank you.
I'd like to add something very briefly. I'm Derek Weston. I wanted to acknowledge the role of HLC and also your role. The building faced very serious structural problems, and it was difficult, almost impossible, to justify renewing and saving the building unless we could make some change. And HLC's approval of the stagehouse and your approval of our doing the entry landing at the front were crucial. So what I think is important is that sometimes in order to preserve something, you need to make some changes, and it really was a great cooperative effort. We could not have done it alone. The city couldn't have done it. Working together, we think we've made a great contribution. So thank you.
The next category is the Lockwood de Force Award, given for excellence in design of landscaping, ornamental structures, and non-habital structures. And this award goes to the Belmont El Canto Hotel with the landscape architect designers Katie O'Reilly Rogers and Courtney Jane Miller. If I could have them come forward. And before you get to speak, I get to say something about this remodel. This is one of our projects that went to the HLC several times over the years. Major investment of this hotel owner-operator to bring back the historic features and repair these features that involved landscaping and the rockery involved with the entry to the facility. Yes. And we have before-and-after shots here of the El Canto entry. You can see that the waterfall elements were retained and reconstructed. The historic elements was a design challenge, yet to comply with all the ordinance standards and comply with the accessibility requirements involved relocation and restoration of a lot of landscape for the site. This is before-and-after shots, historic features retained and the improvements required for the site. So Katie O'Reilly Rogers could not be here today, and Mr. Phil Sudin is picking up the award on her behalf. Would you like to speak on it?
I did want to express to the Historic Landmarks Commission and City Council the appreciation of Katie O'Reilly. She could not be here today. I'm accepting on her behalf. I know that when she was read the letter, the announcement, that she had a very big smile and was very proud to have received this award. So thank you, City of Santa Barbara, and on behalf of Katie O'Reilly, the Historic Landmarks Commission, thanks.
I'd just also like to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. It was wonderful to work on this project, and it was an honor to work on such a historic property along with Katie O'Reilly. And I just wanted to say thank you and very proud of how it turned out.
Thank you. Just asking if the representative from Belmont Hotel is here? Yes, come forward. Get your plaque. This plaque will also be placed on the site to recognize the award given to the property for its landscape design. Thank you. The next award is the New Award Edwards Plunkett Award, given for exemplary design and renovation/restoration. There are a lot of projects in town that are doing this that we decided to recognize. The Crocker House Number Five, 250 Garden Street, the architectural firm Harrison Design Associates as the architect on that project. I want to give a little background on this project. The Crocker Row House Number Five, you can see it there, early 20th-century home design. And this is the 2,000-block of Garden Street, Crocker Row, the five residences. Here, you have the historic photo of that house, and you have the before and after what this architectural firm did along with the owner's cooperation to bring it back to its original appearance. Here it is from the inside, significant repairs, foundation, design, re-roof, and bringing back the design elements to restore this building to its original appearance. Here it is here. So if I'd like to ask the architect to come forward and get Harrison Design... Mr. Anthony Spann, receive your award on the behalf of Harrison Design. Sure. Barbara Lowenthal representing the homeowner.
This was a terrific project, and we were really thrilled when we were hired to work with the owner on this home to bring it back to its original glory, if not more so. And we had a great team working with us. I'm sure Tony's going to remark about them. And so I won't. But yes, we did lift this house off its foundation and rebuild it. It was quite an experience. And the owner thanks you very much for the award.
You know, a lot of people in this room know me, know that I have a lot of passion for historic preservation. But when I first started practicing architecture here in the city, the words "historic preservation" in Santa Barbara were like bad words. People thought we were a false facade. They called us Disneyland. And I'm proud to say that I was part of the team probably over the last 30 years with people in this room, people like organizations like the Pearl Chase Society, the CPA, the Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation, city staff like Jaime Lamone and others in this room, city boards and commissioners such as Bill Mahan, Barbara Lowenthal, Don Sharp, city councils, past and present. We put together ordinances. We put together guidelines. We put together manuals. We created historic districts. We adopted the Mills Act. In fact, it was one of our own city building officials that lobbied Sacramento and got the State Historic Building Code integrated into the current building code that us architects and engineers use every day, right here in town. So I'm really proud of that. I'm proud of being the inaugural or the first Edwards Plunkett Award. But I didn't do it alone. I had a great team. I think my team from Harrison Design, they're here in the audience, the best in the business. We had a fantastic contractor, Jeff Crane, Gifford and Crane, is here with Dan Formannick, the superintendent. He put together a crew of artisans and craftsmen that really were all locally based and really brought this project to fruition. It's unbelievable. My family's here, and of course, they put up with me and my passions and my workaholic tendencies, so I thank them. But obviously, I wouldn't be standing here today if it wasn't for our patron, I'm a client. She wants some privacy, so I respect that. But if it wasn't for our client's passion, for her dedication, for her vision, for her goals, I wouldn't be standing here today. I think we should all be proud that she's part of our community. She's a neighbor of ours, and I think she really has the community benefit in her heart. So I'd like to thank her a lot, and thank you all. This means a lot to me, and I really appreciate it. Thanks for the recognition.
Madam Mayor, we're not finished. We have another surprise announcement. The subcommittee decided to honor another person for the St. Barbara Award as a surprise announcement, and that person is Don Sharp. For his lifetime... Mr. Sharp, before you speak, I would like to just explain why we feel so compelled to honor you this year. You just retired again from the Historic Landmarks Commission. He's served in the community as an architect over 50 years, first serving on the ABR for 13 years, and again, two consecutive terms on HLC of eight years. So this is over 20 years designing, helping, 29 years helping design buildings. And it's collaboration. The architects that design buildings get the valuable input of his services, and now we're sad to see him go. But he's also received many AIA awards as an architect and designed multiple buildings, so I thought we should also recognize his buildings in town throughout the community that he's also designed. You can see the wide variety of buildings in different eras of the city, and buildings that he also associated with Sharp, Mahan, and Lenny. And this excellent example on Coles Village Road is an exemplary example of architecture. So on behalf of the city staff, and for all the hours that you spent working with staff and the community volunteer efforts that you did staffing our boards, thank you, and you well-deserved. Now you get to speak. Well, this obviously is a surprise, and I am deeply honored, and thank you very much.
Thank you all. And, you know, we live in a beautiful place on the planet, but I think it's the artistic talents, whether it be architecture or otherwise, that gives us our soul. So I appreciate your heart and soul into something as important as historic preservation and the work that we've seen here today. So thank you so much for your efforts, and thank you for the presentation. Always makes me feel proud to be part of a city as crazy as the process is. We know why we do what we do, and it's because of products like this one. So I appreciate everyone being here. Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Casey, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We would like to move item 14 to next week's agenda. Item 14 is the Mission Park to Mission Canyon Multimodal Improvements Plan. The public outreach notification wasn't as extensive as we would like it to be, so we'd like to reschedule it for next week.
Okay. So do we have a motion to move this to next week? So moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So I know we're all very excited about the awards. If you can take your conversations out in the hallway, that way we can keep our meeting going. I appreciate that. Thank you. So we'll move on to public comment. We have a couple of minutes here at the podium, and we'll start with Lee Muldaver, followed by Melody Joy Baker. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Lee Muldaver, speaking today as an individual. What a great pre-Valentine's Day council meeting to recognize people like Sarah Dunn that I remember when I was chair of the library board, and Greg probably first met when he was a young kid through his dad. And some of these projects is a former partner of the Victoria Street Theater. I remember the before and after really well. So it's great to recognize that. I think that part of life is transition, and we say goodbye in different ways. So last Labor Day, we said goodbye to Jim Armstrong, who is here to pay tribute to a young guy a couple of years out of college. We said goodbye to Marcelo Lopez. A couple of months ago, we said goodbye to Kent Wojewski, a cops' cop who took early retirement. And just last night, I was saying goodbye to one of our area's best civic servants, Michael Chacos, who's taking a year's leave of absence. But during all the hectic rush of the holidays, people may not realize that the guy for me, who set the standard for good community policing, who had an open and kind ear, who gave respect, who earned respect back, who was a cops' cop, Merlin Kelly, passed away after a very brief illness. And when he was done with his official tour out on the streets, on his motorcycle and his car, he came back as the chaplain for the police department, where he counseled a new generation of officers and actually married quite a few of them to their sweethearts. And I think his service to the city was as exceptional as Sarah Dunn's or as Don Sharp's. And I don't want another week of the council to go by without recognizing what real community-based policing could be, and that was what Merlin Kelly practiced every week that he was a city employee.
Thank you very much. Melody Joy Baker, followed by Lori Gaskin. Can you use the mic right down here? It'll be fine. I'll let you know when your two minutes are up.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. I do not know if you were informed, but the police lost in court. The judge ordered that Reno is a service dog and must be licensed, which means the police department now has to obtain a state-issued service dog license tag. And the judge also ordered that all California penal codes pertaining to service animals must be observed and upheld. Now, that's a problem because your existing police department officers do not choose to do that. Their excuse is they've never had to deal with that issue. So I ask that this council take the appropriate steps to ensure that the police department... Service dogs are covered under California Penal Code sections 365.0 through 365.7. And I ask that the council put in place something to ensure that the police officers are educated on those items, those sections of the penal code, and are required to enforce them from now on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Phil Walker and Mr. Hanson, you're donating your two minutes to Mr. Walker. You have up to four minutes. I'm sorry, Lori Gaskin, you're first, and then Phil Walker. And welcome.
Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is Lori Gaskin, and I have the honor of serving as president of Santa Barbara City Council, City College. And I wanted to share with you three things. First and most importantly, I wanted to congratulate Paul Casey on being a permanent position of city manager. That's phenomenal, and I look forward to working with you on so many important elements. Second thing I wanted to update you on is that we have been working very collaboratively and collectively, the city and the college, on the Neighborhood Task Force. And that Neighborhood Task And that Neighborhood Task Force looks at the areas in the immediate proximity to the college and some of those wellness, neighborhood wellness issues that have surfaced in that area. And I just commend your staff, notably Paul and his colleagues, for being right up there with us in trying to understand the issues and then seeking viable, sustainable solutions that will involve both of us. And I do believe that we are scheduling a joint meeting of City Council and Santa Barbara Community College District Board of Trustees to be presented with the recommendations of that Neighborhood Task Force. And then finally, a third thing that I thought you might be interested in. For the past year, since February of 2014, the college has been engaged in a very broad-based facility master planning process. And the first step in that process is looking at how we effectively and efficiently utilize our three campuses. Just to give you a sense of this, we ask our students to go here, there, everywhere, yonder to access services, when really the model for student success is kind of a one-stop. That's just one example of really examining where things are located at our three institutions, Wake, SHOT, and the main campus, if that makes sense from a student's success perspective. The outcome of this year-long process will be a 15-year visioning, a document that will encapsulate our guiding principles for program adjacencies, program location, and aesthetic design standards. That then sets the framework for a facilities master plan, which will come next. So I suspect as an example, Councilmember Hart, you're probably well aware as a student of having to have gone all over the place to access services and to access your courses, and we're trying to make it more logical, more effective, and more efficient. So I wanted to share that with you. Along those lines, we're engaging the community, and we have scheduled three forums in early March. March 4th will be at the SHOT, March 5th will be at main campus, and March 6th at Wake. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Phil Walker, be followed by Tom Widrow.
I haven't had a chance. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor Schneider, Mayor Protem, Mr. Craig Hart here, and the rest of the members of the council. I haven't had an opportunity to express my congratulations to Mr. Paul Casey, but it's good to have you aboard in a permanent position. I think you're the fourth city administrator I've served under, and that's quite a record in itself, right? You know, the front page of the news press on Saturday says it all, vis-à-vis the drought situation right now. I remember Jim Armstrong in his sort of an exit interview last fall to the city employees. I asked him, "Mr. Armstrong, you know, what will be the most pressing problem coming up with, that the new city administrator will have to face?" In a bullet point, he said, you know, "It's the drought." And on Saturday's news press, the headline, two articles, "Drought threatens development in Santa Barbara," while it also threatens the whole South Coast, the whole state of California to some degree. And here's the answer. Desalination Plant Clears A Major Hurdle. And when I voted for it in 1990, I think it was September or October it would have been, probably, or November, it was presented as a regional facility, and so many people around me on the East Side, I also worked in Montecito, living on the East Side in the early '70s with Griffin Tree and Landscape, and there's such a symbiotic relationship between the city of Santa Barbara residents, especially the East Side, you know, the proximity has a factor in it, and the service industry, construction, whatever, every industry you can think of, essentially, people go from Santa Barbara to Montecito during their living or a portion thereof, and it's good to keep that going. And, you know, uncertainty dampens down the economy, and you need to have a, like a modicum of certainty with a desal plant. I had one gentleman that was out at the harbor, he stood on the breakwater, and we were talking about the drought about a half year ago. I said, "You know, it's getting pretty critical." He turned around and gestured to the ocean. He said, "What drought?" And that's a good point. One other quick thing, if I have four minutes?
16 left, okay.
The rule of unintended consequences unfortunately has played out around me with the traffic calming triangles. We've lost, I didn't study it, but Raimondo on the corner there studied it, and they've lost seven parking spaces right around the Campo Feliz condo units all around me and across the street from him. Seven parking spaces have been eliminated, and parking was at a premium before this has even occurred. So anytime you do something in Santa Barbara, there's also an unintended consequence. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Widrow, and then Martha Cruz for Elena Hernandez will be the final speaker.
Thanks, Bob, and thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, I represent City Watch. For those folks who are working and can't be here, we come down and offer our input on behalf of small business, trade organizations, public groups that have an interest in how the city is being run. Came out with our new brochure, so there you go. It's evidence that things are happening at City Watch. Our website is working as well. I wanted to comment on a decision you made recently to spend $250,000 to study signage in Santa Barbara. And I think on behalf of City Watch, it's not that it's necessarily a bad idea to study signs and then decide where they need to go, but in light of, I think it was Paul's report, or one of you reported on it, what the citizens of Santa Barbara say is a priority is road maintenance, infrastructure. And so I know as a city council, you have to decide where to spend those precious dollars, and it seems that people are crying out not for a study of signage, like I said, that maybe during more flesh times or when our infrastructure is doing great, then that could make sense. So basically, we are saying that I'd like you to go back and revisit that idea of spending a quarter of a million dollars on a study for signage and put it in the pot where the people said that they wanted it to be spent. Their roads are obviously in disrepair, same thing with the county and cities all over the state of California. It's something that our public officials need to invest in, and we urge you to take a look at that. Thank you.
Martha Cruz.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm here speaking on behalf of Elena Hernandez. She's a resident of Santa Barbara for 30 years. She was a businesswoman in Chapala before the development, and she's here as a concerned citizen in regards to the East Side, not the East Side, I'm sorry, the Milpas Economic Business Improvement District that has been rehashed since November, and apparently there is some work going around in the community to make sure that this organization, MCA, that is a political lobbying organization sponsoring this, does not exclude members of the community who are directly affected by this initiative that it still hasn't decided. So because we only have two minutes, and she feels I could do a summary of her experience, she was a fashion, she had a fashion store from 1991 to 2000 on Chapala, and after the development, she lost her business. She made the investment to establish that business from cleaning houses and working very hard. She had no lease, and she had a person who never came with a lease. After she lost her location due to the development of Chapala Street, she suffered emotional and psychological impact as well as a big hole in her pocket because she had been very successful in a matter of two years at her business. She had come with the American dream and self-empowerment idea. She had quick growth, and she realized that she needed more help, but that there was no outreach from any kind of business organization for her to develop as a business owner or even to be able to improve on some of her skills so that she could definitely be a more successful individual. Competition with the big multinationals came around six years after her business, and eventually she was pretty much kicked out of her locale. She is very concerned about what's happening in Milpas because many people are in the same situation that she was for those eight years that she didn't have a lease.
You need to wind up, please.
Okay, excuse me?
You need to wind up. You're two and a half minutes.
Okay, I will. And now she is again going for a new business venture, and she's trying to make sure that she can continue to perhaps have a place where she can engage in her new business of folkloric and Spanish days customs.
Thank you.
So please make sure that this kind of concern is taken into account when the EBIT is considered.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment, and I noticed some people came in. I want to make sure they know that we voted to move item 14 to another week because of some, a glitch in the outreach process. So if you're here for that, you'll be here for a whole nother week. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but just know that item won't be heard today. So with that, if you could, there's the consent calendar, if there's some items to read.
Item 3, Adoption of Ordinance Approving an Amendment to the Agreement to Use Recycled Water for Pilgrim Terrace Homes. Recommending that Council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the amendment to the agreement between the City of Santa Barbara and Pilgrim Terrace Homes for purchase, use, and delivery of the city's recycled water. And Item 6, Amend Position and Salary Control Resolution to Include Salary Range for City Administrator. Recommending that Council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 14046, the Position and Salary Control Resolution for Fiscal Year 2015, to add a salary range for the city administrator.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. We have a public comment speaker slip for Item 6. That was just read. Any other items to pull off the consent calendar? Okay, Mr. Widrow, Item Number 6, that's the Salary Control Resolution for the salary range for the city administrator position.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. First of all, congratulations, Paul, on your job. Awesome. But in keeping with the theme of fiscal responsibility, I'd ask during your discussion here on the consent calendar to talk a little bit about how you arrive at the salary range for the city administrator. I understand that our county, where I was a former employee, has about 3,800 employees and about a $900 million budget, yet compensation for a city administrator and for the county administrator are roughly the same, even though the city is not quite the same size. It may be that qualitatively that the work is done, that Paul's going to do and do a great job, and that our county administrator is doing maybe the same difficulty, but I think it's important when you're dealing with public dollars, and I understand you hired out a firm to look at this, and having been in organizational consulting, I understand that's a good thing to do. But at the same time, you do need to look at the size and scope of responsibilities and compare one to the other, because I think if you're looking at Transparent California online, and you're looking at salaries and saying, geez, why is the city of Santa Barbara paying the same amount, you know, to the city administrator as they are to a larger organization, which is the county of Santa Barbara? Once again, not trying to rain on your parade there, once again, congratulations, Paul, but I think it behooves you to tell that story a little bit and talk about it. Thanks.
Okay. Is there, anyone want to move on something separately, or is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar, Madam Mayor.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee met today, and we recommended to the full council that the council grant a $500,000 home, federal home loan to people's self-help housing for the project on Salsa Poyta and Haley. That'll come to council next week. We also recommended today that the council accept the CAFER, which we'll be hearing more about.
Yes, we will, coming up. But first, Item Number 10.
Designation of Joseph Knoll's Mural, First Church of Christ Scientist and Montjoi Residence as City Landmarks. Recommending that Council, A, adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara designating the Joseph Knoll's mural at 38 West Victoria Street, formerly known as 34 West Victoria Street along the 1,200 block of Chapala Street, as a city landmark. B, adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara designating the First Church of Christ Scientist at 116 to 120 East Villario Street as a city landmark. And C, adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara designating the Montjoi Residence at 931 Los Alturas Road as a city landmark.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm Nicole Hernandez, the urban historian. I'm going to give a brief presentation as to why these candidates were recommended by the Historic Landmarks Commission to be designated city landmarks. The first candidate is the Joseph Knoll's mural that sits on the New Public Market on the corner of Chapala and Victoria Streets. The mural was originally hung on a mid-century modern grocery store facing Victoria Street on this site. When the grocery store was demolished, the mural was carefully removed, cleaned, and installed on the west elevation of the New Public Market facing Chapala Street. The mural was designed in 1958 by one of Santa Barbara's significant artists, Joseph Knoll's, and represents the largest mid-20th century public art piece in Santa Barbara. The tiled mural is divided into six panels depicting epics of Santa Barbara's history. These include the Chumash and successive periods representing the Spanish explorers, Mission Santa Barbara, the California Rancho, American settler, and finally, the modern era. This was, this is a site plan that was in the original drawings for the public market, showing how they planned to incorporate the six panels facing Chapala Street. And this is one of the elevations showing the murals alongside the Arlington Theater. The boundary of the landmark designation will just be the mural itself and not the new building on which it is hung. This is a image showing the murals as they were originally facing Victoria Street on the 1958 grocery store. The mural does qualify for designation under three criteria. It has semi-abstract imagery that incorporates iconic transportation motifs in each panel, such as Chumash canoes, Spanish galeos, carrettes, wagon trains, automobiles, and finally, rockets of the present era. It depicts the ideas of progress for both culturally, technologically, and through the lens of a mid-20th century art form. Joseph Knoll's was a very significant regional artist in Southern California between 1930 and 1970. During his career, he created hundreds of paintings and watercolors, of which over 400 are in private collections, and we are lucky to have a public piece right in Santa Barbara. He was also a leader in our art community. He was hired to teach school, teach art at Kate School and carpentry at Crane Country Day School, and in 1941, he was the Director of Education at the Santa Barbara Museum of Art. He later taught at UCSB, and he was the consultant for art education for the county of Santa Barbara, and in 1960, he assisted organizing the School of Fine Arts for the Brooks Institute of Photography. So the mural does retain most of its character-defining features, including its original dimensions, the chronological arrangement, and the division into six panels, and even a sandstone platter under underneath the mural. Although its mid-20th century location has changed, it still does have its, convey its original appearance of 1958, so it does qualify as a city landmark. And we did want to recognize Victoria Street Partners, who did put so much effort to integrate the mural into the new development to the high standards of the Historic Landmark Commission. So the second candidate, I'll go through all three candidates, and we can pass the rezos at the end. The next candidate is the First Church of Christ Scientist. When viewing this building from Santa Barbara Street, you really see this magnificent row of magnolia trees. These were part of the original landscape designed by noted local architect Lockwood de Forest. And once you look past the trees, you'll see this amazing terracotta-tiled dome and gabled roofs that are, that utilize the Byzantine style as well as the Romanesque elongated windows. The building was designed in 1931 by Henry Gooderson, who used these European... The building was designed in 1931 by Henry Gooderson, who used these European styles, giving them a Mediterranean influence with the white walls and the tiled roof, so unique to Santa Barbara. This shows you where the building sits, on the corners of East Valerio and Santa Barbara Streets, and you can see the big dome from the aerial view, as well as these long arcades that reach out to the streets. This is a foot, this outlines the footprint of the 1931 building, as well as the garden wall, the significant trees, the fountain, and this intricate sidewalk that Lockwood de Forest designed that will be the boundary of the designation. The designation excludes the newer Sunday School building and the parking lot areas. The architect, Henry Gooderson, is noted San Francisco architect, who is noted for making such a very large contribution to this state with all his architecture, and we are lucky in Santa Barbara to have one of his pieces. He had the ability to bring this Byzantine and Romanesque styles with the Mediterranean influence, creating this unique building that is one of a kind in Santa Barbara and is important to our architectural repertoire. This view of the arcade illustrates Henry Gooderson's talent to create just a simple elegance through this rhythmic arches. And the intricate stained glass windows illustrate the extreme attention to detail and excellent craftsmanship that is displayed throughout the building. This photo really illustrates how the massing of the windows of the building steps up to this beautiful octagonal dome that's accentuated with the sharp contrast of the white walls and the terracotta roof. And it has been a part of downtown since 1931. The building retains almost all of its original features so that it meets all the criterion for integrity since its original 1931 appearance. So it does qualify as a city landmark. And our final candidate is Montjoie Residence on 931 Los Alturas Road. This monumental estate looks over Santa Barbara from atop the Riviera. It was constructed in 1928 and really represents this national trend at the time for constructing opulent mansions. The proposed boundary of this landmark would just be the original L-shaped building and this motor court, because those were the only parts that the architect had on the original drawings, and the landscape has been altered by several owners throughout the life of the building. The 1928 building represents an example of elegant fusion of the Beaux-Arts, French Eclectic, and Italian Renaissance architectural styles, which are styles used in many important buildings in Europe and gave the building a grand presence as it overlooks the city from atop the Riviera. The building represents the best and only remaining 1920s opulent estate in the neighborhood. The building is unique and impressive, and Montjoie survived the Sycamore Canyon 1977 fire, which engulfed many of its neighbors, and the Tea Fire in 2008 that destroyed the houses across the street, as well as several to its north. This extreme attention to detail, materials, and craftsmanship is really expressed in this balustrade on the terraces, the elegant wood windows, and the decorative brackets of the building. The original plans show that the Montjoie remains essentially the same as when it was constructed in 1928, thus meeting all the criteria for integrity and qualifying for city landmark status. So staff does recommend that City Council adopt resolutions to designate the Joseph Knoll's mural, the First Church of Christ Scientist, and the Montjoie as city landmarks. And after you make your motion, we invite you to come and give the resolutions to the owners, although I think only one owner is in attendance, and that's the First Church of Christ Scientist, has a representative here.
Okay, so we have resolutions for the other two I can hand to you, and we can get that to the owners. I don't see any speaker slips here. Any comments or questions or a motion? Mr. White?
Well, Madam Mayor, the, my brief comment would be, these are three wonderful examples of Santa Barbara art and architecture, and I'm privileged to be up here being part of the, of the group that's bringing, honoring them yet further. I did have a fair amount of personal acquaintance with the Knoll's family. I missed Mr. Knoll's by a year in his teaching career, but tried to teach his son to play tennis, which was one of my least successful ventures, but anyway, a great family as well. And they've been very involved in the Wildling Museum over in San Inez, as a matter of fact, in that as well. So anyway, I'm honored to make the motion to make these buildings and art pieces city landmarks.
On behalf of the Senate, Madam Mayor, I know the Montjoie personally fabulous, just unbelievable place, and the Christ Science Church is also just wonderful. All of this is great stuff to be part of.
Great. Any other? Great. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, let me come on down, and if First Church of Christ Scientist can come on over, and we'll give you a resolution. Read what was already said, but I'll say it again anyway, because on November 19, 2014, the Historic Landmarks Commission adopted resolution number 2014-9 to recommend to the City Council designation of the First Church of Christ Scientist as a city landmark. And designed by the noted architect Henry Gooderson in 1931, with a unique Byzantine styled dome with Romanesque-style arches and windows, the building is significant for its historical and architectural influence on the heritage of the city. And the building has retained a high level of historical integrity at its location, setting, association, footprint, design, materials, and workmanship have not been diminished by minor alterations, and the building conveys its original 1931 appearance. The building embodies outstanding attention to design, detail, materials, and craftsmanship, including the intricate stained glass windows and wood doors. And the City Council of Santa Barbara found the First Church of Christ Scientist meets six of the city landmark criteria listed in section 22 dot 22 dot 040 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code. And on February 3, 2015, the City Council of Santa Barbara adopted a resolution designating the First Church of Christ Scientist as a city landmark based on its historical and cultural significance. So therefore, I, Mayor Helene Schneider, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Santa Barbara, do hereby declare the First Church of Christ Scientist as a city landmark effective today. Thank you for your stewardship of a beautiful, beautiful building. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And feel free to introduce yourself and say whatever you'd like, so.
Well, I'm Richard Kentrow, and actually, I'm newly-elected president of the church, and I came today just to witness this. I had no idea we were getting the certificate.
And if you could speak to us, you got a camera right on you, so the whole world can watch you right now.
Oh, you're the audience.
We're the audience. There you go. Go right ahead.
Well, that's really all I had to say, because I didn't have anything prepared.
That's okay.
But I appreciated working with Nicole, and actually learned a lot about the church myself through the process. And thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and congratulations. Thank you. And thank you very much for all the work it takes to make these landmarks, and I know it's work well, well done, and will carry on into the future in terms of our historic preservation efforts.
It's a pleasure, it really is. This is the best part.
Great. Appreciate it. It's a day of historic preservation today, isn't it? Okay. So move on to item number 11.
Civic engagement plan regarding district elections.
Is it Ms. Schmidt, or? Yeah, whenever you're ready, great.
Yes, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Kristi Schmidt, Director of Administrative Services. And in October 2014, council asked staff to begin preparations to place a ballot measure on the November 2015 ballot, to ask voters whether the city should implement district elections for council members beginning in November 2017. Council asked staff at that same time to develop a civic engagement plan to involve residents in drafting that ballot measure. As initially envisioned, this process would be the first step in a more comprehensive and extended process of public input. And if, where, if district elections were approved by the voters, there would be the creation of an independent districting commission to hold hearings and establish geographic boundaries of the districts. That would happen between November 15, 2015, and November 2017. Since then, however, trial date in related litigation has been set for April 2015, and the possibility exists that the city would be ordered to begin district elections as early as November 2015. Given that, the city may need to be prepared to advocate for geographic boundaries and other key issues in litigation and settlement discussions much earlier than we'd hoped. Depending on the outcome of the litigation, we'd be, need to be prepared to finalize ballot terms, including the geographic boundaries, as early as April, this April, or early May, late April or early May. So the public outreach plan now has two distinct goals, and the first being to collect as much public input as possible and practical to inform the council's position and the city's position in the April 2015 litigation and potential settlement discussions. And then the second would be, should, should that litigation allow us to go forward with our, with our initial plans, to move forward with gathering as much input as possible to create a ballot measure to place on the November 2015 ballot about whether to implement district elections and what a districting commission should look like, what the composition of the commission should be, and what their charge would be. So some of the questions we'll need to gather input on are, if we are ordered to implement district elections in November 2015, what should the district boundaries be? So we'd need to get some input as quickly as possible from the public on that. If district elections are not imposed, but through the court proceedings, what will the November 2015 ballot measure say about who would be eligible to serve on a districting commission, and how they would be appointed, and, and what their duties would be? And then, given the staggered terms of office, should, should the voters approve district elections, how would that be implemented? So which, which districts would be the first to fill positions on the city council? So those are some of the questions we'd be asking. To collect this information as quickly as possible, we are recommending contracting with National Demographics Corporation, which we call NDC. They've already done a significant amount of demographic work for the city in its consideration of district elections, and are in the best position to respond quickly. So we're looking to have them create a public engagement tool, they've done it in several different cities, that would be available online to collect public input. People would be able to consider various district maps, and even submit their own map of geographic boundaries of districts. We're hoping to work out the details before next week with NDC. Various models exist, from the most rudimentary paper and ink type models, draw your, your boundaries, to sort of sophisticated online input tools. And the model we select and eventually recommend will depend on price and the availability, the ability of them to meet our timelines. So we hope to return with a recommendation for that next week. As far as the engagement process, what we're hoping to do is have the first workshop later in February or early March to introduce members of the public to the issue of the district election, the input process, and how they can use the available input tools that we'll have online to give some public input. The second workshop, we'd hope to complete by late March or early April, and that would be to review the results and conclusions of the first workshop and the information gathered through the online tool, and then to gather some additional and refining information. And then the third workshop, in the event that litigation has been settled in the city's favor, or were still ongoing, will be to allow the public to view and comment on a draft ballot measure created by the city attorney to go to the voters in 2015. Alternatively, would, should the litigation be decided against the city, this meeting would serve as the first in a series of hearings on the district boundaries proposed as part of litigation, which is required by the state under amended state law. So we hope to finalize the details in the next few days, and are looking for your approval to move forward with the plan and the contract with NDC. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. We do have some public comments. Speaker slips, any questions first?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cologne.
If I might, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have two short comments to add. First, the council agenda report includes a mistaken reference to discussing even-year elections. We do not plan to solicit direct input on that question. If it comes up, we'll report back to council. And I apologize, I neglected to edit the report properly. Secondly, as Ms. Schmidt mentioned, the state law, one thing new that we know since last fall is that effective January 1, 2015, state law was amended to require a series of public hearings before district elections can be moved on by a city, regardless whether there's a court order or not. And so you see the reference to Elections Code 10,010, that calls for two public hearings and a third hearing in front of the city council. We are hoping that the community workshops can do some of the work associated with that code section as well. So really, the council's direction to get started on civic engagement foresaw what state law ultimately imposed January 1. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions first? Okay. Mr. Woodrow, and then Lanny Ebenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Regarding this item, and in light of what city attorney just said, on behalf of City Watch, just question, ask you to discuss the idea of whether or not to spend any money in advance of the April decision. It seems like if, if things were decided in the city's favor, that we wouldn't necessarily need to go forward with district elections. So the question is, is whether or not it's wise decision to spend public dollars at this point when the litigation is still up in the air? Now, I understand what Mr. Cologne said, said you're still supposed to move forward with hearings and get public input, I understand that. But above and beyond that, in terms of directing staff, and maybe to engage an outside party to spend money on how to construct a larger, larger scope of public input, just question, considering once again that public dollars are in short supply, and that you have a lot of different competing priorities, would you please, at least when you discuss this, explain what the wisdom of going forward now as opposed to waiting until the April decision? Thank you.
Lanny Ebenstein, and then Lucas Sucker will be the final speaker on the item. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mayor Schneider and members of the council, Santa Barbara needs district elections, and it needs them now, starting at the next city council election. District elections will be a great benefit to the city. They will make campaigns less expensive and more personal. They will make local government more representative. They will bring government closer to the people. I say, power to the people. As someone who has read government agency staff reports for many years, the report accompanying this agenda item contains much of interest. Your staff is all but saying that if this matter goes to court, the city would almost certainly lose, and for this reason, you should reach a settlement with the plaintiffs. If this issue goes to trial, it could well cost the city $2 million in its own costs and in plaintiffs' costs for which you would be responsible. For these reasons, among others, I support the proposed civic engagement plan and community workshops. It will be necessary to hold workshops to draw district lines. A new day is dawning in Santa Barbara, and I hope that the members of the city council embrace this new day and work with it and for it, rather than trying to oppose it and stall it. District elections are coming to Santa Barbara, and they should come to Santa Barbara at the next city council election. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Lucas Sucker?
Madam Mayor, may I ask Mr. Ebenstein a question?
Sure. Mr. Ebenstein, we have a question for Ms. Murillo. Go ahead.
Did you have an opinion about even-year elections, since it was something that was mentioned earlier, sir?
Sure, sure. Well, I should say that I'm a member of the Committee for District Elections, and the Committee for District Elections at this point in time supports odd-year elections. However, I think there are strong arguments for even-year elections in that, from, from two standpoints. It's less expensive, to the tune of about $200,000 a year, and there's higher voter turnout on even-numbered years, particularly among precincts with individuals from protected classes. So I think that you can make an argument on those bases that, in the long run, even years would be something strongly to consider, but I think the paramount issue is to move to district elections at the next city council election, whenever that may be.
Well, what about both district elections and then even-year together? Doesn't that sound like a good one-two punch?
Well, I think that that is something that, as the city council, and once again, you're limited you're limited in what you can say, but I suppose members of the public can say what they like to say, is that as you enter your negotiations, that is something that I would, if there's interest in that on the city council, I would encourage you to discuss that possibility with the plaintiffs in the matter. I actually wrote in May of 2014, eight months ago, advocating on behalf of even-year elections and district elections. So, it's an issue that I personally think there's considerable merit to.
Thank you. Lucas Zucker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and members of the council. My name is Lucas Zucker. I'm a researcher for CAUZ, formerly known in Santa Barbara as Pueblo. For many years, we've been the primary organization working to increase voter turnout and electoral representation for Latinos and other underrepresented people in Santa Barbara. We believe that discussions around election reform in Santa Barbara should be an open, broad, and inclusive process, with opportunities for everyday Santa Barbara residents to have their voices heard about solutions to improve representation in the city. We applaud the city's intent to hold public hearings on how to approach this issue and draw potential district maps. It's vital that members of the public are given adequate time and opportunities to have their voices heard on how they would like to be represented in elections, especially those who live in neighborhoods that have historically been underrepresented on the council. Underrepresentation of Latino voters on the Santa Barbara City Council is rooted in a variety of complex problems that residents should be able to weigh in on. CAUZ, as well as many of the Latino political leaders within the city, have publicly expressed our concern that any district election settlement must also include a move to even-year elections to increase diverse voter participation. We urge the council to ensure that all public, that the public participation process broadly includes the opportunity for residents to address all possible remedies for the city council's underrepresentation of Latino voters. It's a complex problem that requires a comprehensive solution, not a rush to satisfy the bare minimum requirements of avoiding a lawsuit. Public hearings should include discussion of how to draw potential district lines, as well as all the other issues at play in reforming elections to address racially polarized voting in Santa Barbara. Taking this process seriously and doing it right requires listening to the diverse voices of all Santa Barbara residents who have a stake in the city elections. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period. It's to the council. Mr. Hart.
Well, I think this outreach process is incredibly important. I think that the timetable that we are facing is not typical for making a decision of this import. I would prefer that we had more time for more discussion with the community, but the time has been set by the court. So, having the public weigh in as fast as possible on the full range of issues that are part of this discussion is critically important. So, I think that, you know, we're doing the right thing by setting up this process. We're making it as open as possible. Folks are going to be able to talk about all the different elements of this decision, including even-year elections, any other ideas that folks have about addressing the fundamental problem of underrepresentation of the Latino community on the council. That's something that I think all of us share an interest in and want to address properly. And so, I think that having this venue, having this opportunity, having this dialogue, having a public participation process is critical to making the most informed and best choice for the citizens of Santa Barbara.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support this going forward. Ernie Solomon, whom I respect quite a bit out there in the public, has accused us of fighting district elections tooth and nail, and I don't think that's accurate. I think that it is our job to be deliberate and wanting to hear from the public on these issues, and I would not characterize it that way. And we are being concerned about the money spent, and we always have to weigh that. I mean, this is electoral reform that will change how people up here are elected and who will be represented, and it's very important. So, I just hope people recognize that, that we are taking some time and maybe spending some resources, but for a good reason. I did want to mention that I attended the League of Women Voters Forum on this. What a great group, very intelligent discussion about electoral reform. And, Mr. Zucker, you had said something at that forum that more Santa Barbara city residents voted in the school board race in 2012 than they did for city council in 2013. Not to beg on the school board, because that's a really important thing to vote on, but, and that is, that said something about more people come out in even-year elections, besides saving money. So, I wonder if we could throw that back into the mix, even though it was a mistake, Mr. Cologne, for you to put it in there? Can I move that, for the community workshop, number one, that we include even-year elections as something for the public to, and us to consider? Is that a motion? That's a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. I guess we should discuss the motion. I know I saw some other lights on on the issue of the process. Mr. Cologne, we're in a tricky position here, I know, because we're dealing with litigation and settlements, and, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to give the public something that may not be able, we may not be able to deliver by giving the impression that this is something that's even, we could do or not, and I don't want to get into settlement talks if there are any, any advice on how to proceed, given the motion on the table. Madam Mayor, before you do that, I should say, I'm the one who put it in the report, and I have, and I have, gathering my information from very different information places than Mr. Cologne, so as well, much as I appreciate him taking the fall for it. I accidentally put that in. That's okay. We'll, we'll talk to you later. No, I'm just kidding. No, it's no problem. I just, I'm more interested in making sure that we stay, you know, correct on our process and the legal matter and just on a bigger process with the community, if not, I don't want to give the impression that we can do something that we may or may not be able to do, you know, that kind of, well, anyway, you heard my question.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, certainly, you're not in a position to do it unilaterally, and so, my suggestion was to not foreclose it coming up. Should the public raise the issue, we'd report back to the council on that, but not to emphasize it as a point or to have it misinterpreted as a suggestion or recommendation from the council. In my view, it's a complicating factor in an already very complicated situation, and it would be my preference for the council not to take a position on that until you hear from the public.
Okay. And so, Ms. Mario, if you could restate your motion, because I'm not sure if that connects with what I just heard from the attorney about, if you could just restate your motion.
May I ask Mr. Cologne's advice on how to restate my motion, so that we don't, so that we're respectful of this process? I do respect the District Elections Committee.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, I'm suggesting that the council be, leave open the possibility of consideration of even-year elections, should it come up in the public process. We've heard from CAUZ today, that's probably some assurance that it will come up, but we haven't had any opportunity to gauge the breadth and depth of community concern about even-year elections. I think councils should reserve its opportunity to do that until the issue comes up. So, in terms of modifying your motion, I think you would simply need to ask us not to foreclose even-year elections and to report back on what the public says about that issue.
Thank you. Then I'll restate it, that I move that the council keep an open mind to even-year elections, depending on what we hear from the public. We might hear all kinds of stuff. People are talking about the cumulative vote, and there's some progressive ideas out there. So, I'm sorry, I, no, I made, I messed up my motion. So, Mr. Cologne, it was, did you like me to use the word foreclose better?
No. Maria.
That was okay?
I understood your motion to ask the council to keep an open mind to even-year.
Ask the council to keep an open mind to even-year elections, depending what is heard from the public, and I'd include with that direction the staff to report back on what we do hear from the public.
Thank you.
And the secondary, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any, first on this motion, and then we can get back to the other piece to it. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Just a comment, that the confusion going back and forth between the dais and the city attorney and staff is indicative that this is not a proper vote. Would be a mistake to throw it in the water now. It just muddies it, so I would urge my colleagues to vote no on this, not meaning anything other than let's keep it simple right now, and when it comes up, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Francisco.
I would also like to say, with respect to this motion, that I hope I always have an open mind towards any idea for improving the city process and improving the work that we do here, and I personally do not need a motion to take a pledge to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Hart.
Well, I think the intent is to make it clear to the community that this is a significant moment in time when an important decision may be made outside of the public realm through a court settlement, a very important process of electing council members, and that we would like to hear from the public about other options that ought to be part of that discussion. And there aren't going to be many opportunities for the public to talk and weigh in on this subject. And if we take it in the normal linear fashion that we would norm, we would traditionally do, I think that opportunity will be foreclosed by events and timing. So, I think that it is important for us to engage the public and to ask these questions and to have people feel as though they can talk about anything related to electoral reform in these limited number of workshops that we're going to have. I think that is the reason that we initially proposed to do this. I don't think that, you know, this discussion probably isn't necessary, because people are going to bring it up, but I think the point is that I think it's important for the council to go on the record, go on the record and say, we're open to hearing what the public has to say about this issue, because they may not get the traditional opportunity that they have in a public hearing before that decision is made, and this is, this is the chance to ask them to engage on this issue and all of its complexity.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, that's precisely the point. We want, we want the public's opinion, and as Mr. Cologne said, certainly, the people from CAUZ are going to bring it up if nobody else does. I'm the one that brought up the CAR in the first place, because it says, if proposed by the plaintiffs in litigation. So, it fed in something that was complicating. So, this is a rather ridiculous discussion. We are going to hear from the public. The whole point of our entire dialogue up here is to hear from the public. So, I mean, whether or not to support the motion is almost moot. I don't, I don't even know what to do here.
Well, I'll just say to the motion, there's a motion on the floor. I think, I mean, we're going to listen to everything that is said at the hearing and, or the workshops, and we'll get, we'll get feedback back from staff if we don't attend all of them about what was said. We'll have one in front of the council. We know that the issue of even-year elections will come up, because it already has and will continue to. So, really, to me, voting in favor of the motion says we're going to do what we always do, and so, and I would just suggest that voting against the motion might make things more confusing in the general public perception, that we're not going to hear what the public says. So, given that there's a motion on the floor, I don't see any harm of voting for the motion, because it is something that we're going to do anyway, and I know, Mr. Francisco, you don't need a motion to tell you to keep an open mind. I get that. But, you know, I think, I think the statement was, this is complicated, it's about electoral reform issues, and we're going to hear a whole bunch of things, and we're going to want to hear what people have to say. So, that's how I understand the motion. Anything else? I see some lights on. Anything else on the motion before we move forward? Mr. Francisco?
I'll just say that I believe this motion is completely superfluous.
Okay. Well, all right.
You know, Madam Mayor, I disagree. I think there's people out there who think we have a closed mind about district elections or even-year. I, I think we need to tell the public that our minds are open to this idea that at the League of Women Voters Forum, frankly, just made the whole room go crazy, thinking that we would get more voters to the polls, which is a really important point to make.
Well, either way this motion goes, we're going to hear back from what the public said, so, on all the topics. So, with that, we have a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Is that a five-two? Does that, gets that right? Okay. All right. Back to the other part of the agenda, dealing with the directing the administrative services director about the agreement with National Demographics Corporation and the other parts of the public input process. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of course, I believe that doing this public outreach is extremely important. I have believed from the beginning of this whole process that the most important thing we can do is engage everybody in the community in a discussion about how voting for city council works. I mean, that is, the city council is the representative of the people in this city, and so, we need to make sure that we do represent the people and we represent them in the way that they desire, in any way that that conforms to law. With regard to this whole concept of underrepresentation, which is something that keeps coming up, what I want to say to people is, for whatever reason, certain groups of people, whether that's defined by race, ethnicity, religion, income, or whatever you pick, for some reason, some people vote less in elections than others. This city has done everything it can to encourage participation in elections. And in fact, I was on this council when we decided to do mail-in ballots. In city elections, every registered voter in this city gets a postage-paid envelope, and they have 30 days to fill out the ballot, seal it, and drop it in a mailbox. So, if there are barriers to people voting, the barrier does not exist in the act of voting itself, it's somewhere else. And so, I would just say to the people who are concerned about underrepresentation, that the real cure for that, if there is a cure, is education, and that perhaps the reason that some people aren't voting in city elections is because they aren't interested in city elections. And, to a certain extent, if that's true, we could even take comfort in that. That might mean that they think, oh, things are working pretty well in the city, we don't need to worry about it. But I believe that this city has done everything in its power to make it as easy as it possibly could be for any voter to vote, and so, whatever effort we do to increase participation in elections, changing the voting system is not going to affect that. What really will affect that is voter education, and I'm all in favor of anyone who wants to increase participation in elections, doing everything they can in their power to educate voters to take a part in our civic process. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as we go through this process, and whether or not we have much of a say in the outcome or not, it remains to be seen, as the gentleman from CAUZ was talking about getting it right, trying to not force the issue, try to get districting correct, try to get the mechanisms correct, but we do have a incredibly tight timeline. And I have to disagree with my friend, Lanny Ebenstein, as far as imposing these things right away, because we are taking away the choice of the people. That's why we advocated initially, to bring this to the people for an election. We want to hear from the public. We want to direct our governance by what the people tell us to do. This is just doing the absolute opposite. This is just saying, you're going to have a district election come hell or high water, and, and once again, this may be out of our hands. So, we'll do the best we can. We'll hear everything we can. We'll take all the input that's possible, and we'll hopefully draw reasonable districts, if we're told to do so, that will be functional. And I know that all over the country, that's a little bit of a hot potato. So, but no, I have to say, I personally have an issue, because it doesn't speak to what people necessarily want. Maybe people would vote in district elections. They voted them out in 68, was it? I don't know. But this artificial means of trying to tweak a system, to make it better through the top-down legislation, is not how I envision a democracy working, so, but that's, that's my little, that's my little axe to bear, I guess, so, thank you.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not take comfort that some people don't vote, and I don't think this city has done everything it can to encourage voter participation. I know, I personally have done voter registration and done outreach, and, you know, that is the responsibility of this council. Maybe if we had more Latinos on the city council, more Latinos would vote, right? Okay. So, let's see what district elections does, since you think it's coming. Yeah. I hope it does work, Mr. Ebenstein, you know, but if we are sticking to odd-year elections when we know more people vote in even-year, then we aren't doing everything we can.
I would just ask all that, who are listening and the media here reporting on it, to do everything we can to make sure that these workshops are well everything we can to make sure that these workshops are well-attended, that we do want to hear from the public, you know, changing the charter one way or another, whether it's through a court order or through an election, or however it works, is a very serious issue. And for a charter city, it's basically our constitution, and we need to hear from our residents about how they'd like to see their city governed. And district lines are about as important as it gets when it comes to deciding who represents you on this body. So I strongly encourage full participation. It may seem wonky for a lot of people, and it is, but the consequences of what happens after certain lines are drawn, and if there are district elections that happen and where the maps or where the map lines occur, make a big difference. So we are only as good as the participation, the city is only as good as the people in it participating and making it as participatory as possible. So I really encourage those to partake in these workshops. With that, I think, do you need any specific, I think we're all, we just need to, we need a motion on the staff recommendation here, and off you go, and you'll be busy for the next few months.
Move staff recommendation.
Okay. Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number 12.
Comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014.
Okay. Is it Nemus or Nem, pronounce your last name for me, please.
It's Nemus.
Nemus. Thank you. Ms. Nemus.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am Julie Nemus. I'm the accounting manager for the Finance Department, and I am going to be presenting the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30, 2014. I do have a couple extra copies of the CAFER, as we call it, in case anybody wants to look through it and doesn't have their copy. So I can set these over, and Mr. Samario or Mr. Casey can pass them out if you'd like one. So I did just present this at Finance Committee in detail, so I'm going to be providing a little bit more of a summarized presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have and stop me at any time. I also have Rich Kikuchi here. He is from Lance Sol &amp; Lungard, our public accountancy firm that does our independent audit, and he won't be presenting, but he will be available to answer any questions you might have at the end. In this presentation, I'll be covering a little bit on the background of what a CAFER is, the layout and contents of the report, financial highlights, and then the audit requirements and results. Really quickly, before I get into the CAFER, I did want to take a moment to recognize the accounting staff that worked tirelessly to get this CAFER done. We have three accountants, Doug Smith, Lynn Sparks, and James Hamilton. I think we have a few in the back. Doug and James are both here, and they did work a lot of hours and put a lot of time into it, so I just wanted to recognize them very quickly. So very quickly, what is a CAFER? This should look a little familiar to you. We've presented it before. But a CAFER is an annual financial report that is prepared in accordance with nationally-recognized accounting and financial reporting standards. Basically, what it does is present the financial condition of the city at a point in time as well as the result of operations. But a CAFER goes a little bit beyond just the financial report. It provides, it's called comprehensive because it provides information beyond the minimum requirements. It also allows us to apply for the GFOA award program and provides the reader with additional information. So why do we prepare a CAFER? The most important reason is because it's required. City charter requires it. It's also required by state law. It's important in issuing bonds, as well as it communicates information to the reader that otherwise we couldn't. There are three main sections of the CAFER. There's the introductory section, which is unaudited, provides a letter of transmittal prepared by Paul Casey and Bob Samario, also some information about the city organization. The second section is the financial section, which is covered by the audit opinion. There's an independent auditor's report, management's discussion and analysis, which provides a comparative analysis to the prior year. We also have the basic financial statements, which is where I will spend the most of my time talking about, as well as the notes to those financial statements. And the final section, which is unaudited, just provides some more statistical data, some trend and demographic information. So I'm going to start with the government-wide statements. We have two types of statements. We have government-wide, which is on an accrual basis. A new GASB required all agencies to present government-wide statements showing all assets and liabilities, and I'll start with the government-wide. This is the statement of net position. What this does is show where we are at a point in time. As of 6/30/2014, what is the current status of the city? What is the statement, what is the net position of the city? And what is the, we have two activities. We have governmental activities, which are generally the general fund, other governmental funds, special revenue funds, and then you have the business type, which are generally the enterprise funds. In total, we are looking at, the total assets are about $1 billion. So we have over $1 billion in total assets, more than half related to the enterprise funds, only about $200 million in liabilities, which is a much smaller number than your total assets. And then you have your net position. The majority of that relates to investment in capital assets. You have about $69 million in restricted, which are external restrictions, but the number I really wanted to point out was that unrestricted number. And what that is comprised of is non-spendable assets such as advances or loans receivable. It's also the city council policy reserves, as well as assigned and committed capital projects. This is the statement of activities. This is broken down into two sections. We have the governmental activities, which is the general fund and governmental funds, and then there's also the business type, which I'll talk about in just a moment. The main purpose of this statement is to really show how much for all the different functions of the governmental funds, how much do these different functions have to be subsidized by general revenues. So we'll look at the expenses, and then you see the program revenues, and it takes you to the net subsidy. So what you would expect, for example, the public safety, which is fire and police, it has a $50 million net subsidy, because fire and police don't generate a lot of program revenues, so it's subsidized by the general revenues of the general fund and other governmental funds. So in total, the net subsidy for all the functions are about $80 million. We have about $85 million in taxes. We have some other revenues, such as franchise fees, and then we have a gain on transfer of capital assets. I'm happy to talk about if you have any questions. It's a one-time gain. But our net change in, our change in net position is about $51 million. If you take out that $38 million one-time gain, it is about a $13 million change in net position, just for the governmental. This is the same statement, but this is for the business type, which is the enterprise funds. And how this differs from the governmental is that the enterprise funds actually, their revenues should, they should have enough program revenues to cover their expenses, so that net column will no longer be a negative. So you'll notice that every single enterprise fund has sufficient program revenues to cover the program expenses. In total, $5.6 million for all of the business-type activities. That's the net revenues for all business-type activities before general revenues. Down at the bottom, after investment income, other and transfers, you'll notice there's additional, another one-time gain on the transfer of capital assets. It gets you to a change in net position for the business-type activities of about $35 million. If you take out that one-time gain, it is about a change of about eight, I think it's about $8 million or $6 million for the business type. So those are the government-wide statements. That's the city as a whole. Now we would look at the individual funds. I'll start with the general fund, focus on the general fund for a minute. And this differs with the government-wide because it's on a modified accrual basis. It doesn't represent all assets and liabilities. There's no capital assets or long-term debt. In total, the general fund has about $38 million in assets, most of that being cash and investments, about $7 million in liabilities, with a fund balance of about $31 million. Of that fund balance, about $7 million is non-spendable. $2 million is restricted, external restrictions, including encumbrances. $21 million is committed. That's going to include city policy reserves, and $153,000 is assigned, and that's going to include, those are balances that are determined by the city administrator or finance director, such as capital carryovers. Moving on to the general fund final results, this is a schedule we provide in the required supplementary information, and it shows the annual budget, the final annual budget for the year, the actuals for the year, and then the budget variance. Revenues are including transfers of about $1.7 million. Expenditures include transfers out of about $3.6 million. So actuals, revenues, budget to actuals are in the good of about $1.01 million. You see all the way to the right. Expenditures came in, actual expenditures came in under budget by about $3 million. So it was a positive variance overall for revenues and expenditures of about $4 million. But for actuals for the year, revenues versus expenditures, it was $1.7 million revenues exceeding expenditures for the general fund. And that was after the $1.8 million transfer from the general fund to the capital outlay fund for the 50% surplus, 50% of the surplus per policy reserves. This is just a summary of where we stand at 6/30/2014 for reserve balances, the city policy reserves versus actual reserves. At 6/30/2014, per city policy, we should have $28.8 million in policy reserves. Our actual reserves come in at about $26.9. So we're about $8 million below city policy reserves, and this does as well include that $1.8 million transfer of the 50% of surplus. What I really wanted to show you is kind of the trend over the last, you know, several years. Since 2008, you'll notice that we are shortening that gap between the required reserves and the actual reserves. So getting all the way to 2014, there it is becoming a rather small difference between required reserves and actual reserves. There's one other fund I wanted to bring to your attention, and I did discuss this a little bit last year because it went into, it had a deficit last year for the first time. And we have the Self-Insurance Fund, which for CAFER reporting purposes, it's one fund. However, there are two funds that actually make up this one fund, one of it being the Self-Insurance Trust Fund, and the second being a new fund for fiscal year 14, the Post-Employment Benefits Fund. What I wanted to point out with the Self-Insurance Trust Fund is that for the last several years, it actually has had a deficit, and that's due to increases in the estimated claims payable liability due to actuarial reports and additional estimates for those claims. It has taken the fund to a deficit. So I wanted to point this out as staff might be coming to you in the future with additional recommendations related to this fund. As for the Post-Employment Benefits Fund, this is a new fund. What we did is, in the past, the individual costs related to post-employment benefits were in the individual funds. They were in the enterprise funds, and then they were not shown because it's of the modified accrual basis in the other funds. We actually moved it to a new fund so that we could track all the costs in one place, and we are now just starting to fund all these post-employment benefits. So you'll notice there's about $400,000 in cash in this fund. So I wanted to point out a few key footnote disclosures. This is a schedule, I'm sure you, looks familiar from other years, but one of the big issues that we are facing over these last few years and coming up is CALPERS in our retirement and funding for our retirement plan. And this is on pages 63 to 65 of your CAFER. But what this is showing is how much, how funded are we for our retirement plan with CALPERS? This is a valuation as of 6/30/2011, but the accrued liability actually represents how much we should have in the bank at 6/30 to fund our obligation. So for the miscellaneous plan, it's about $410 million, safety-fire plan, $146 million, and safety-police, about $190 million. The actuarial value of the assets is how much we actually have. It's not the market value. It's the actuarial value. And so in a minute, I'll actually show you what the market value is, but this is based on our actuary report from Aon. So then it shows what is the unfunded liability and how much are we funded. So as of 6/30/2014, based on evaluation in 2011, we have about a 77% to 79% funded status. And then we look at it based on annual covered payroll. So how much are we unfunded, is our unfunded liability as a percentage of payroll? And the reason that this is important is because if it's a small payroll, such as fire has the smallest payroll, it's a smaller base for which you can change rates and really impact that liability.
Could you use a different color combination next time? This is almost unreadable.
Sure. I apologize.
It is unreadable.
I will use a different one, yeah. That's probably hard to see, too.
Great.
You know, I will change the font to white on the darker sections. I apologize for that. Well, you ask, and I...
Certainly not worried about these numbers that can't read them.
This represents the market value. The only difference is the market value versus the actuarial. I will, I will say it so that you know what those numbers are. For miscellaneous, the market value is $284 million. For safety-fire, it's $103 million, and for safety-police, it's $133 million. So that results in us, our funded status actually being almost 10% less than it was at the actuarial value. So I'm going to go back just for a quick second. In the funded status here, the percentages for miscellaneous are 77.5 funded, safety-fire 79.2, and safety-police 78.5. But once you change it to market value, it's 69.3 for miscellaneous, down about 10%. Safety-fire goes down 10% to 70.5, and safety-police, about 10% to 70%.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What, how does this compare percentage-wise with other agencies about our size statewide in terms of unfunded liabilities and CALPERS and all that are be somewhere in the ballpark?
Mr. Samario just said to me that we are in the same ballpark as other agencies our size. I have one more slide, and this is probably going to be also difficult to see, so I apologize, but what we did is, we, the other market value was based on a valuation from 2011, and we do get reports every October. So this report is based on the most recent report we received in October of 2014, and it updates the market value. It caused a slight change in the funded status. Our miscellaneous plans went up slightly, about 2% in funded status, whereas our safety-fire and safety-police dropped 2%, both, about 1% to 2% in funded status. And then one thing I wanted to point out with this is that there is a new GASB statement that's coming out that is effective for next year. It's called GASB 68, and the actuarial reports no longer report on an actuarial value of the assets. It's only market value, and it's the market value that we will have to use to determine what the unfunded liability is that we'll have to be now reporting on the face of our financial statements. I wanted to just briefly talk about the other post-employment benefits. I know I mentioned that we have a new fund for this, but what is in that fund is basically three things: the retiree medical, implied subsidy, and the sick leave. And the reason why I really wanted to point this out is that it is a very large accrued liability that we're showing. However, the majority of that really relates to that implied subsidy, which is really the amount for retirees that we have to subsidize by all the current employees that are being in the same health plan and that we're subsidizing their, you know, their medical benefits because it's one blended rate for all the retirees and all active employees. So that is the majority of that accrued liability. We also offer retiree medical, and we also have sick leave benefits for people who have CALPERS benefits. So a sick leave, the additional retirement benefits for unused sick leave. So this is the total actuarial accrued liability. As of what's in our financial statements right now, it's only a portion of this that we have to book, but this is the total unfunded accrued liability. The last footnote I wanted to go over is the streets infrastructure related to capital assets, the pavement condition index. I wanted to point this out because it actually represents a potential unfunded liability for the city. Under the accounting standards, we have to disclose this, but over the last several years, our PCI rating has been dropping. Here, I'm representing what the estimate is to keep the PCI rating at a 70, and then what was actually spent. So you can see that it's been dropping since 2009 from that PCI rating of 70 all the way to 2014. There was a slight uptick from fiscal year 13 to 14. That was entirely due to the former state route 225 being relinquished to the city, and it was relinquished in an excellent condition, so that caused a little uptick for fiscal year 14. But the trend is that it is going down, and that we established a minimum PCI of 60, which is at risk, and the trend that it's going in, we are soon to go below that 60.
On the two items where it's over $4 million in expenditures, does that include the ARA funding, the federal stimulus funding?
Yes, it does.
So that, it's not like we put in extra general fund money of $2 million during the recession?
No, no, correct.
I think that's good context. Okay.
Yeah, in the notes, we have a Yeah, in, in the notes, we have a couple of extra sentences in that financial statement disclosure about how there were additional funds provided in those two years. But that is, that is a good point to point out that that's the only reason why those are a little bit higher in those two years. So just really quick about the audit results and what an objective of an audit is, is just really to express an opinion as to whether the financial statements are fairly presented in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. And the auditors also come in and review and evaluate our internal control procedures. When the auditors came in, they did give the city what's called an unmodified audit opinion, which is a clean opinion. It means the financial statements do present fairly in accordance with GAAP. Also, the auditors represented that they had no disagreements with city management, that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls, and that there were no indications of fraudulent or inappropriate activities. The last thing I wanted to talk about was, what I mentioned earlier, was this new GASB. It's called GASB number 68, Accounting and Financial Reporting for Pensions. It was adopted a few years ago, but it will be effective next year for fiscal year 2015 when, when I present for you next year. The key changes with this are that we will now be having to show that entire unfunded liability on the face of the financial statements, on those government-wide statements I showed you right in the beginning. And we'll have to show it based on fair market value instead of the actuarial, actuarial value. So it's going to be a larger amount than what is shown in the past. We also have to provide additional required disclosures, but I wanted to point out that this is something that all agencies are going to have to show, so it's going to be a large amount on everybody's books. And it's only going to be for CAFER reporting purposes. And at that point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I don't see any speaker slips, so it's to the council, questions or comments? It's a lot of work, I know, and I know the Finance Committee had quite a long review of it earlier today. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's how we cleared out the room. We pulled out the, the CAFER. Everybody's gone. Where did City Watch go? This is the meat and potatoes, right? So I just wanted to say that you, you all made a good point about, in the letter part of it, that for people who are concerned about their water rates going up, that we may be doing well with our bed tax and other, our other tax revenue, but that cannot be, or we don't apply it to our water rates. And it was just a point that someone made in here, and I think as people receive their water bills, especially if we go forward with the D cell plant, there will be a whole lot more attention on it. And we have different funds in the city, and things don't cross over, so that's a good point to make. There was also something in here about assurances, about embezzlement, and I just wanted a comment from our staff about the controls we have, that we had issues in our police department, and if you could give us a statement about how we're looking at that so that something like that would never happen again.
I can tell you from both a finance perspective, and then I think it also would be a good opportunity to have Rich come up and talk about what they do as internal, as external auditors, to come in and test our controls. But I do know that we in finance have changed a lot of the procedures that we do internally to check for things like that. We changed things on our treasury side in terms of checking for revenues and checking to supporting documentation and supporting their subsystems and cross-checking, you know, to various documentation. So I know that there's a lot of things that we've done on our end. We also have secondary checks, and we do some variance analysis to make sure that if we see changes in revenues that we don't expect, then we'll investigate them. So there's a lot of things that we've definitely done. And then when we have the auditors come in, we actually also direct them to go out to sites and do what we call cash control audits and things like that, so that, just to make sure that we are looking at all the various places where we think there are, is a lot of cash or there could be some control risk. And so I think I'd also like Rich Kikuchi to come up and kind of just talk about what he does.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Rich Kikuchi, and I'm the engagement partner over this audit. And as Julie mentioned, a part of the audit process is evaluating internal controls. That's something that we do at the beginning of every audit. Actually, that's, we probably spend 200 or 300 hours actually on your evaluation of internal controls. When we come out in, in May, we'll do assessment of the controls citywide. We kind of rotate it, you know, on, on, on the hours we spend every year, you know, from year to year. We also do what's called SAS 99 test work and interviews. That's a requirement for auditors to assess the risk of fraud. And so what we'll do every year is we'll interview a sample, a judgmental sample of employees citywide, just to kind of give them the opportunity to let us know if they, you know, if they think there's any weaknesses within the city or if they know of anything. But as far as the actual internal control test work, we'll look at the, the major areas within the city: payroll, revenues, disbursements, and, you know, cash and investments, capital assets. We'll look at all those, all those main areas. You know, just by nature, an audit is just that. We don't look at every transaction, nor can we be looking over everybody's shoulder, so I can't say, you know, there's nothing happening, but we go in it to look, to see if the procedures are in place and are sound: approvals, you know, segregation of duties, things like that. So, and based on our test work, based on our assessment, we feel that the controls are sound here at the City of Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Should I move that we accept the, I move that we accept the report?
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Mr. White?
I had a, something that I wanted to raise about the report that I think just went by kind of quickly. So before we vote on it, I'd appreciate, I think Mr. Samario explained it to us at the, at the Finance Committee. And Ms. Nemus's comment was, this is on the actuarial versus actual? I forgot, that's not quite the term that was used. But I think it's worth going over because I think Ms., what Ms. Nemus's comment that I heard was that it was just for reporting, reporting purposes or a comment to that effect, whereas what I heard from Mr. Samario in finance was, no, this number is now, CALPERS is heading toward, is heading toward it to hit that number with 100% funding in 20 years. So can you go over that a little bit, Mr. Samario? And I'm, of course, bringing up bits and pieces here that Mr. Samario went over.
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of council?
That piece.
Sure, and Mr. White?
And maybe explain, first of all, what is the difference between actuarial and?
Okay. I'll give it a shot. It's, it's a little bit complicated, but a number of years ago, PERS implemented a number of smoothing techniques to avoid dramatic changes to employer rates from year to year. So they implemented a number of things, for the most part, trying to, trying to spread things over a longer period of time because they recognized that things fluctuate, but on a long-term basis, they kind of net out to a more normal basis. And investments is one area where you see volatility from year to year, but on a, on a 20 or 30-year basis, things kind of normalize. And what they've done historically and just until recently was that they allowed the value of assets, the true market value of assets, to fluctuate up or down to certain levels before the, it caused them to change rates in the following year. So the range that they were able to move was between 80 and 120%, which is a pretty dramatic range, but as long as it stayed within that band, how they affected rates in the future was pretty nominal. They decided because in, in, in light of the fact that we are still only at 70% funded, and this is pretty consistent statewide, that they wanted to get to 100% funded, and they felt that having this ability to fluctuate is, is not being as responsive as they need to be. So they've done away with that approach, that smoothing technique, in order to, in fact, be more reactive, more quickly reactive to changes in those market values. So they now are going to be using the true market value rates and adjusting rates in the future. And then, as I mentioned, what they want to do is get to 100% within the next 20 years, and that's why we're seeing in the next five years, starting next fiscal year, a dramatic increase to our rates. It's going to be to basically get all plans, the goal is within 20 years, to 100% funded. They tried other things in the last few years, but even with the results we've seen in the last three, four years with the economy and better rates of return, we're still at 70%. And so they recognize that something more dramatic is required, and that's why they're doing this next five-year change. But that's why we have the two, the actuarial and the market. We're done, we're no longer going to be using the actuarial value of assets, PERS will no longer be using that. It'll always be on a market value basis, which is more accurate. Ms. Nemus was referring to the fact that now that we're always being, going to be basing things on market value, when we have to next year actually record on our statement of net position, the true unfunded liability, which is the sum of all those unfunded liability numbers, 128 million, 48, and 66, that totality is going to be on the government-wide statements as a liability for unfunded pensions. And that will be based on this, these exact numbers, the market value, not some actuarial value of assets.
So the, and, and, again, I don't understand what the actuarial value term means.
It just means that it's not the market value, it's something else that the actuary has used, and that's that, that number that is allowed to fluctuate between 80 and 100% to 20% of the true market value. Again, it's just for actuary purposes as for rate-setting purposes in the future.
Okay, so it, what, and what that accomplished was, it dropped our percentage substantially, and, and then also the policy that came into play says that we have to repay that sooner. So that, that double piece is going to be pushing our pension rates up very substantially over the next five years.
That's correct.
Is that a fair character? Thank you very much.
Mr. Hotchkiss? Did you have your light on?
Just, the difference between actuarial and market is that market's constantly fluctuating and actuarial is not.
That's correct, it's more stable. It's a make-believe number, and this, this is not an honest or accurate reflection of what the market value, what the assets are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much again for your work and, and working with the, we do have a motion and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Were those ayes over here? Yes, yes, good, seven aye. Good, all right. Universal agreement on accepting the CAFER. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number 13.
Contract for Design of Montecito Yananali Street Bridge Replacement and Pedestrian Improvements.
Mr. Owaziac? Hello?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. John Owaziac, Principal Civil Engineer for the Public Works Department, and I'm here today to talk to you about the Montecito Yananali Street Bridge Replacement and Pedestrian Improvements Project. And it is one of four projects that the city has received grant funding for. So I'd like to elaborate a little bit on the, the Active Transportation Grant Fund and give you an update on that. But we're primarily here because staff is recommending that council award the professional services design consultant contract to Drake Haglen and Associates. So I'd like to inform you a little bit about the ATP grant. And on September 26, 2013, Governor Brown signed legislation creating the Active Transportation Program in the Department of Transportation. The ATP consolidates existing federal and state transportation programs, including the Transportation Alternatives Program, the Bicycle Transportation Account, referred to as BTA, and the State Safe Routes to School into a single program with a focus to make California a national leader in active transportation. And so the city is fortunate to receive grant funds for four of the five submitted projects for a total of $8.6 million. And the purpose of the ATP is to promote biking and walking and to increase the safety of non-motorized users, achieve greenhouse gas reduction, and enhance public health in minority and low-income neighborhoods and communities. So this slide surmises the four projects and the total of their grant funds for each project. And three of the four projects benefit the Lower East Side. And the fourth project is in the Los Pacitas Valley. So I was going to just take a moment to walk you through those individual projects just briefly, and then we'll wrap up with the Montecito Bridge project. So the Los Pacitas and Modoc Multi-Use Path, this project includes the planning, environmental, and design for the separate pathway for bicyclists, runners, and pedestrians of all ages and abilities. This project will require careful coordination with their adjacent projects, city projects, including the Los Pacitas Cliff Drive Roundabout and the Los Pacitas Creek Restoration Project, to name a few. And staff will be returning to council targeted for March 10th for the award of the professional services design contract for this project. The next project include, is the Lower Milpas Street and Kai Porta Veyarta Sidewalk and Lighting Project. And this project includes the installation of sidewalk along the east side of Milpas Street, beginning, or from Cabrillo Boulevard, continuing to the 101 Highway on, on-off ramps just located just north of the Union Pacific Railroad. Additional sidewalk infill will be provided on Kai Porta Veyarta connecting Milpas Street to Dwight Murphy Park and the Santa Barbara Zoo. And street and pedestrian lighting along this corridor and on both sides of Milpas Street will be included in this project. The next project is the Casique and Solidad Bike, Ped, Bicycle-Pedestrian Bridges and Corridor Improvements. And this project replaces the existing pedestrian bicycle bridge and adds a new pedestrian bicycle bridge over Sycamore Creek. With the installation of these two new bridges, the walking and biking experience will be dramatically improved for families and biking to the adjacent schools, the Franklin Neighborhood Community Center, the East Side Library, and several neighborhood parks. And this project is, again, scheduled to come to the council on February 24th for the recommendation to award their design, design professional services contract. Before going to our featured project, I would like to acknowledge our grant fund team. We've had great success with a team effort here. Just like to acknowledge some of the staff. Jessica Grant from our transportation planning was the lead grant writer. Brian DeMore was our project cost estimator and scheduler and a lead for coordinating with other agencies. Derek Bailey, our traffic engineer, was providing great assistance with traffic and cost benefit analysis. Andrew Grubb and Laurie Nez are project engineers and engineering, provided project, cost estimates and project exhibits. And special thanks to Kim Thaler Strange and Rob Dayton for their administrative review. So this was truly a team effort, and it took some time and effort to put together some very quality applications, and again, we were successful on four of the five applications that were made.
Before you go on, what, if the timeline of when the contract will be awarded, what's the timeline of when we'd see a completed product, of the bridge in particular?
The bridge timeline is that we are scheduled for the construction to start in April, spring of 2016. There is a timeline for these grant funds, generally a two-year from the allocation from the California Transportation Commission, and there's a possibility we may need an extension. It's a very, very tight timeframe for us for this type of a project. So we're definitely demonstrating the best of our abilities to, to move these projects forward. Tight time constraints, but generally it's two years, but likely there'll, there'll be requests for an extension of up to a year, I believe, for each phase. But, but the goal is to deliver these projects. We were, this is the first time these ATP grant projects were, were allotted, and so we want to be in line for the next round as well. So we're trying to demonstrate that we are putting a very concentrated and good-faith effort into delivering these projects, so they are on the top of our priority list.
Great, thank you.
So our feature project today is the Montecito Yananali Bridge and Pedestrian Bike Improvements Project. And so going back to 2013, staff conducted a significant outreach to the east side with the neighborhood and listened to the residents' transportation concerns and developed action steps to address those concerns. In this, in the picture here, you can't really read the signs, but some of them say, "Fix our bridge," and "We need a safer bridge." That's what some of them say. So we're pleased to report that a new safer bridge is on its way. The existing bridge, oops, let me go back. The existing bridge location is in this vicinity here at Montecito Yananali. And this slide shows the proposed improvements with sidewalk infill component being the, the orange-red, the lighting corridor being the yellow in, in several of these locations, some ramp, ramp installation, and of course, the replacement of the bridge. The existing bridge is very narrow and has no sidewalks, and on January 27, 2014, council authorized the use of $433,000 of one-time city funds to retrofit the existing bridge. While the original project involved adding a cantilever sidewalk attached to the existing bridge, but upon further analysis of that concept, the designers and the city's flood plain coordinator, it was determined that the added cantilever sidewalk and the bridge rail would cause a rise in the floodway of Sycamore Creek. rail would cause a rise in the floodway of Sycamore Creek, so that alternative did not pan out. The city funds allocated proved to be an important component of our match for the ATP grant, and so it was a voluntary match, but it may have contributed to the success of getting the grant funds for this project. So the current project is to construct a new replacement bridge that accommodates vehicles, pedestrians, cyclists, and with a larger span and without a cause to rise for the flood, for the floodway. So streetlights and pedestrian scale lighting is also included in the project along Salinas, Montecito, and Yananali Streets, and, which is a common route to and from the nearby schools. And the lighting is proposed to improve night visibility and to improve pedestrian safety. So the intersection of Montecito and the Yananali Streets will be converted to an all-stop to improve pedestrian safety. And this slide was an attachment to your council agenda report, and showed the vicinity of the schools and the, the city facilities and the vicinity of the projects outlined in the dashed lines black here. So this project will construct critical missing sidewalk links to a complete network of sidewalks on the east side, allowing safe routes to school, safe routes to the Cleveland School, the Franklin, the Adelante and Muntri Schools, and construction, again, is scheduled to begin the spring of 2016. So back to the recommendation here, staff is recommending that, that council award the contract to Drake Haglund and Associates. Drake Haglund was selected as part of a request for qualification process that followed strict Caltrans Local Assistance Procedures manual requirements, and consultants were rated based on their qualifications and technical proposals. So based on the proposals and interview, Drake Haglund was ranked as the most qualified consultant. So staff recommends that council approve the award of the Project Design Services Contract to, for the Montecito Yananali Street Bridge Replacement and Pedestrian Improvements Project to Drake Haglund and Associates. And with that, we'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. I don't see any speaker slips for this, so it's to the council, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may, I'll just go into comments with that.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Can you back that up to a couple of slides to the ones got the orange, basically has the sidewalk, yeah, that one's good, right there. First of all, this is my neighborhood, and I've been, as a planning commissioner, I was bemoaning this bridge, and I just, I'm so appreciative that staff has identified this funding source, and, and I know that Mr. Kelly has, has a real hand in this as well, of giving rein to, to staff to get, get out there and look for these kinds of things, and this is really, obviously, a total home run. But that, first of all, the bridge is, I'm surprised we haven't read, had it be a headliner with, with one of those baby strollers getting hit by a car. It's just, it's, it's terrifying to see all the time, this is, it is a very, very busy spot. And, and I want to highlight two other things besides the bridge, and that is the, the orange sidewalk on the, first of all, that's near the bridge there, as well as those two blocks to the right that are, it's Salinas Street, and it's got, you know, it's one of those sort of insults to urban planning where you're going along and there's no sidewalk in one of the most heavily-traveled spot, pedestrian spots in, in the east side area. And that's, it's a difficult spot, I can, I understand why it didn't get done, because it's, it's a hill, it's really starting to go up there. There's a whole bunch of, of private improvements that have happened on that stretch there, and I know there will be some challenging negotiations to, to go on around those, but it is so needed for this area. And then the fact that this, all of this lighting, I mean, lighting was the other topic that we, we've heard about at the Neighborhood Advisory Council from day one. And when you, when you showed sort of the areas of influence, you didn't, you didn't just happenstantially put the Franklin Center on there, which is, you know, huge, it's, it's the, it's the center of, of the east side, and, yeah, right there. So this, this project is, is enormous for the east side and for the city, and it's, I'm just delighted to see that it's going forward, Madam Mayor. And if there's a motion to be made at this moment, I would make the motion to approve the staff recommendations.
Okay, is there a second?
With thanks.
Okay, Mr. Francisco.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White said everything that needed to be said about this. I thank him for all of the important local details, and I'm glad to see the city going forward with this project.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To add to it, Councilmember White said, "I talked recently to the principal of Cleveland School," and apparently this bridge, this Yananali-Montecito intersection, that serves Franklin more, but she was really grateful for what the improvements on Salinas, which you also pointed out, and I think some of those parents who were there with their protest placards are coming here to thank. So this is good. They protest, and then they thank us when, when we do something right, or staff, anyway. I'm so pleased. It's, it's a miracle, really. When I got, when I first got elected, I did some office hours at the East Side Library, and this older woman came to me, a grandma, and she was saying, "Can you do something about that?" So I, I'll take a little credit, but really, it's staff and that you found the money. Thank you very much, you know, from the residents, and I think in the next couple of weeks, people will be coming to thank. Thanks.
Well, and given the outreach that occurred when we were making the decisions on that one-time capital funds, I hope that we can do some additional outreach to those same individuals and organizations that things are moving and give them a timeline, and, I mean, certainly when construction starts, they'll see it, but to let them know that it's coming, I think it's worth taking some time and, and reaching back out to, we have all those records of who came and spoke, and let them, give them an update, because I think they deserve to know that they, that they were heard, and, and, I mean, this is, I think, as I remember, Mr. Hart, you might remind me from the SB-CAG meeting, I know my colleagues on SB-CAG board were kind of jealous that the City of Santa Barbara got as much money as it did from the CTC. I think we were the largest grant recipient of anywhere that got that kind of funding. I don't know if it was county-wide or statewide or what, but we got a huge, I mean, that $8 million was almost unheard of, and so if your staff were getting calls from other public works departments throughout the county to say, "How'd you do it?", it's because we had good staff who wrote a great grant under the rules that were asked for by the CTC, so I want to commend the work and taking care of those grant opportunities.
Madam Mayor, if I may add, that the city will receive more per capita than any other jurisdiction in the state for this funding.
Right, yeah. Mr. Hart?
And I do understand that staff has been asked to make presentations to other agencies about the effectiveness of their grant writing proposal, and I must say, I'm a little bit nervous about that.
Yeah, don't give away our secrets.
I was gonna say, don't tell them everything.
I'm not sure we need more competition in the future, so.
Well, don't give them every, all the secrets, right? Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, we decided item 14 would happen next week, so we move on to item 15.
Stage-two drought update.
Hey, we're good. Mr. Hagmark.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Joshua Hagmark, I'm the Water Resources Manager, and here again to provide a monthly drought update, trying to be sensitive to the time the council has, but all the information to cover, I've tried to find the blend here, so if there's any questions along the way, please feel the, stop me, and we can discuss it more. We have had some several changes since we last met. I should also mention, we have Madeline Ward, our Conservation Coordinator, here today to answer questions about our conservation program. As part of our overview today, we're going to be going over rainfall totals so far and the weather forecast, community conservation and water supply outlook, state and supplemental water, drought response, capital projects, and water conservation program. I'll summarize this slide. Basically, we need to receive above-average rainfall to make a significant impact in the current drought situation we're in, and we have not seen that yet. We were off to a really good start in November and December, but as you can see with the current numbers, we've certainly fallen behind normal, with basically no significant rainfall in January, and no significant runoff into our local lakes, which is really what we're looking for to make a dent in this, in this drought. So this is the, probably the most positive slide I have to do with forecasting. NOAA, as of January 15th, is still predicting, is optimistically predicting above-average rainfall for the next three months. So that's, that's one piece of information NOAA has put out that I think gives a glimmer of hope. However, another piece of information is this intensity monitor that is put together, and this is a six-month document, looks forward about six months, and of the intensity scale, which goes from a D0 to D4, they continue to see, expect to see exceptional drought conditions in our area of California. Another document put together by the Climate Prediction Center also looks at the persistence of drought, and it's kind of, kind of interesting, if you find this interesting, Santa Barbara lies right on this boundary of drought persists or intensifies, and drought remains but improves. We seem to land right on that little transition there. What I want to do, point out in this slide, though, that I think is important, when we, when we'll talk about later in the presentation, the purchase of supplemental water, is that they are predicting persisting and intensifying drought in northern California, which doesn't bode well for our ability to purchase additional water in future years. So monthly demands, I am extremely pleased to report back that we've seen 33, a little over 33% reduction in water usage for December. That took me by surprise, again, that's compared to a normalized December, so one you might expect in a normal year, so seeing 33% reduction is pretty significant. Just quickly going through this chart, where the green is the plan, that's what we would expect in, in a normal year for our water usage to be, and the blue line is our drought target of 20% below planned. And then we're also showing calendar year 2013, which we report to the state, that's the benchmark in which we're compared to. What I've done here with this graphic is kind of taken the last nine months or here and kind of walking us through where we've been. Stage-two drought was declared in May, our rates took effect in July, and what we've seen over, since those rates took effect, is a 23% reduction from our community from July through December, which is spectacular, it's great, our goal is 20%. It's, you know, whatever people are doing, continue to keep doing that, it is, it's making a difference, it certainly is helping out with the drought supply planning, and it's one variable that I'm glad we're, we're meeting, and we don't have to continue to be looking for additional water to fill this void. So with our current supply strategy, we've made quite a few changes from the last time we presented this, to try and provide a little more clarification. We are currently in water year four. We have added a seventh year, just to kind of provide a, a bigger perspective on where we're headed. And what we've done with water purchases is actually break it out into two segments. One is the city's capacity in the state water pipeline to deliver water, and we've also shown in here, we are trying to utilize other agencies' capacity in the pipeline if they don't have water to deliver, so there's a little element of risk there. In December, everybody's orders, their delivery goals were due to CCWA. Everybody is asking for their full capacity in the CCWA pipeline. However, looking through the numbers, not everybody has the water to back up that delivery schedule, so we are hoping, and that's a month-to-month thing, we're hoping to take advantage of other agencies' capacity in the pipeline to, to deliver another 600 to 800 acre-feet of water this year. We, as you'll see in...
Question on that.
The one has a question.
Do, is it feasible to lease, purchase, whatever term you want to use, capacity from other districts, other water agencies?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, currently there is a, a protocol for taking advantage of capacity, unused capacity. It does not include purchasing at this point, that has not been an, an item of buying other people's capacity, I mean, based on what we saw in December, everyone's asking for their capacity.
I understand, I just, we don't, do we know whether that's a, maybe I'll ask our attorney on that, is, can we, is it legally possible for the city to rent or purchase capacity from another agency? I mean, if that's not a question to answer today, then I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate an answer on that for future, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question, Mr. Hagmark, the, the total water usage of over 14,000 acre-feet per year, is that, is that just for budgeting purposes, because that's, you know, in terms of what, I mean, so we're gonna make our supply at this level, we don't show ourselves in any kind of a variation with that?
Councilmember Ross, that's right, this is our, our supply target, and it's different from what is sold, but this is our, this is the target we shoot for, right, in a normalized year.
And, and Madam Mayor, that's what that, that 20%, for example, that we're in, in the water year we're in, that's water that's not being used, that's the conservation piece. So he's just starting with our past use, and then this is how we're getting there, is first we're hacking off the 20% conservation, and then we're purchasing supplemental water, and then each of those, right.
So year six now reflects what our current strategy would be, which is the 3125 acre-feet a year desal capacity, but what you'll notice is, even with that capacity, we are still recognizing a 43% shortfall. We hope, obviously, to make 20% of that up with continued extraordinary conservation from our community, but there's still 23% supply shortfall. Now, there are several ways to approach that shortfall, and I think that's going to be an active discussion going forward, but obviously, there may be opportunities to purchase water and deliver it, that may be one option, depending on how severe the drought is up north. We may be able to get there with some level of conservation through moratorium on watering lawns, that'll get us a small part of that, but not that complete component, or it may be looking at next spring, going up to a 7,500-acre-foot desal facility. So I think there's several options to be explored, but at this point, I think it recognized, even with desal, we're looking at a 43% shortfall in year six, and it's a significant gap to fill. So state and supplemental water already secured needs for this year, assuming the community continues to achieve the 20% goal, we feel we have adequate supplies. We are maximizing the city's capacity in the state water pipeline. The initial 2015 state allocation is currently at 15%, and that's about 450 acre-feet. That number actually gets finalized in May from DWR, and that'll be based on rainfall for the year. It could go, it could go either way at this point, and they think they were optimistic with that initial November-December rainfall, and they came out with 15%, but as we saw last year, it went to zero and then back up to five, so who knows where they'll end on this one. We are working to secure, as we've stated in the past, 4,500 acre-feet for later years of the drought. We have budgeted $3.5 million, and we are looking for water purchases statewide. At this time, we are pursuing two purchase opportunities to get us to that 4,500 acre-feet. One is with the Antelope Valley East Kern Water District, or AVEC, and there's about 7,500 acre-feet available to CCWA, and of that, 3,800 acre-feet would be the proportion for the city. That water is south of the Delta, which means it's a little more secure, it is in San Luis Reservoir. The current agreement is $500 an acre-foot with a one-to-one exchange, basically meaning we're, basically borrowing, we're paying $500 an acre-foot to borrow this water, and we must return it within 10 years. The timing of this agreement is looking to be in the February to March timeframe, so we will know fairly soon whether that water has been secured or not. The Biggs-West Gridley purchase is similar to last year, it is a North Delta water purchase. The price has not been firmed up yet, but it sounded like around $600 an acre-foot. We need 700 out of that, we will probably need to buy over 1,000 because of the carriage losses through the Delta, and the timing of that agreement, they'll be looking for, that's a take-or-pay agreement, where we pay either way, and they'll be looking for a commitment by the, probably the end of April on that water, and we won't know if we actually receive any water until the end of October, so that has a, a little variable to it. Now, both of these, I should say, we're still working on this, but that, but that $500 an acre-foot is the cost, what we're working on right now, and we'll bring back to you, is the total cost of that water. We're estimating, when you take into consideration repaying that water in the future and the cost of buying water, hopefully on a market where there's abundance of water, so you can buy it for fairly cheap, it's still gonna probably push that water up to about 1,000 or more an acre-foot when you put in all the costs. The Dudley... The Dudley Ridge Bank Water, we've been talking with them, and unfortunately, they're saying at this time, they cannot return the water because of the state allocation. They feel like it needs to be over twenty percent before they'll have the ability to return that water, but there's around twelve-hundred acre-feet sitting in that water bank that belongs to the city. So, just a little update on the stage three. We were with, talked to Water Commission and Council in, in December and got out some initial feedback. We are still working on what impacts some of the conservation efforts would actually see. We plan to kick off in March a discussion about potential options, what the impacts will be. We're looking for input from the Commissions and Councils in the community. We expect to go to Water Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and City Council. In April, we would probably bring back an item for, to talk about enforcement of the stage three regulations. We will be in an emergency situation or discussing an emergency situation, and I think our approach is going to be a little different than what we've done with stage two, and we will be talking about what other options are there. Ultimately, headed towards May 2015 tentative declaration if, if we need to go there. So, drought response capital projects, some positive news on that. Valverde Well, we reported was operational in December. It is currently meeting system demands. Those demands are fairly low, as you might expect, but with this warm weather, we expect in a couple of weeks to start to pick up. That well is capable of producing about two hundred gallons a minute, which is somewhere around two hundred acre-feet a year, and the total system demand is about eight hundred acre-feet a year. So, anyway, it's a pleasure to have this on. I didn't put anything in here, but there's really no significant changes to the tertiary project. It's still on schedule for delivery and operation this summer, 2016, or 2015. Finally, some good news on our groundwater wells. Corporation in our wells in production at seven hundred and seventy GPM. Veracruz is in production, and City Hall is back online. Very pleased to have all three of those pulling out of a full groundwater basin that we hope to start helping meet those targets that you saw up there. So, desal project highlights, proposal due date has now been moved to March 5th. We heard from all three contractors that they felt in order to give us a, a solid bid, that that bid date, or the proposal due date needed to be pushed back. So we're actually going to see if the proposals are March 5th. Their cost proposal is due one week later on the 12th. And we've been working with the SRF loan folks. We submitted our application in December and been holding bi-weekly meetings with them to keep that dialogue moving along. It's, certainly, we're getting a very optimistic picture from the staff at, at the state that they want to make this happen for us, and so hopefully, this doesn't get caught up in, in their environmental permitting review process, but what we've done, looking at it, is the best scenario right at this point is that we'd actually get some loan docs in May, which would set us up for a tentative award in June, which is pushed back from, I believe, the April discussion we had previously. But I believe the staff at the, at the loan folks are working hard to make, make this happen for us. As far as permitting highlights, you've probably all read, we were at the Regional Board Thursday and Friday last week, and they ultimately approved our findings that our intake facility is existing, which secures our ability to use our screened open ocean intake for the foreseeable future. That, Madam Mayor, may want to jump in on this, but there are some conditions, and I can kind of quickly summarize those, or do you like to-
It was a very long meeting, day and a half. I didn't, well, almost day and a half, but didn't expect it to take that long, but all good things come to those who wait, I suppose. But I, I do have to commend the staff, and there, there are three conditions that were voluntarily offered by the city, by us, to begin with, that then the board made mandatory. And one was the new screens on the open water intake, the one-millimeter mesh screen, or whatever you call it.
Wedge wire.
Thank you. And then a half a million dollar cost to, for a restoration project at the Deveraux Slough, and then basically solidifying and, and making more official through the board the direction that the, the seven of us already gave to staff on initiating studies about, about subsurface intake, and gave some timelines about when to report back about the progress. So, but, you know, what those studies entail and what the results are, we will know when we, when we get them, and we just have to report back to the board. So they just wanted a little more assurance that the direction that we gave, they want to make sure actually happens, and so we said, of course, that's the direction we gave. But I do have to commend staff and want to thank, actually, Sheila Lodge, Leslie Wiscombe, Water Commissioner Russell Ruiz, Kate Reese, and, and Mike Jordan, who all spoke and waited for, until about four o'clock in the afternoon for a meeting that started at eight-thirty in the morning, to speak their two minutes on, on the issue. So they all, they, they stuck it through and, and waited, and so it, it was a, it was a good meeting at the end of the two days, so.
Thank you. So we're now preparing for the Coastal Commission public hearing, and that is, again, for our maintenance and repair CDP. We've, the Coastal Commission has accepted our existing permit to operate our facility. This permit is specifically for the, the activity of resetting our screens and pumps back in the ocean and any maintenance, ongoing maintenance for those screens. That hearing is February 13th in Pismo Beach, so next Friday. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Madeline Ward.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Madeline Ward, and I'm the Acting Water Conservation Coordinator, and I wanted to update you on some of our conservation programs. I wanted to start off highlighting one of our popular ongoing programs, which is the Green Gardener Certification Program. This is something that we develop and coordinate in conjunction with the County Water Agency and City College's Center for Lifelong Learning. It's a fifteen-week bilingual class series for sustainable landscape maintenance practices. It started in fall 2000, and at this point, we have over fourteen hundred graduates in the program. It's held every spring and fall. The current class series just began last week on January 28th, and it was overflowing, so we'll have more to come in the fall. It teaches sustainable landscaping practices such as proper pruning, fertilizing soil health, and as well as many, many irrigation classes in terms of designing irrigation systems, maintaining them, troubleshooting them, and making sure they're working efficiently. This is something that we help bring guest speakers in that are experts in the field to help train. It, it can be a wide variety of a, a business owner who wants to start a new business in terms of gardening, or we have landscape maintenance companies that send all their staff through this program, as well as some city parks staff have gone through this program, and homeowners, too, people that really just want to learn how to dig into their yard or farm and, and make it more sustainable. I also wanted to congratulate City College for winning the 2014 Water Hero Award. This is something that we give out annually to an individual business or organization that goes above and beyond in our community to conserve water, and we were happy to announce City College as the winner for their conservation programs that were both indoor and out. They participated in our Water Wise Survey and Incentive Program in 2013, where we did a campus-wide survey of how they use water indoors. That was our main focus, and identified a thirty percent reduction in water use, as well as thirty-five thousand dollars in savings for their utility bills if they made maintenance changes as well as facility changes. What they did indoor was retrofitting the science labs for, with aerators, the locker rooms, the cafes, and the kitchens, and loofah showerheads were installed, and as well, they went above and beyond to take a look at their outdoor water usage and cut, curtail that as well by removing turf, turning off fountains, putting in water-wise plants in those fountains, and also installing drip irrigation and rain gardens. Speaking of rain, we have free rain shut-off sensors. This is something that we promote every winter, and they are available to any city water customer who has a controller, a sprinkler timer, that has the little hookups for a rain sensor, which is almost every sprinkler timer out there at this point. This is a really simple device that you can see there on the bottom that will sense the moisture in the air, and it will interrupt the watering system, so when it's raining, your sprinklers don't come on, which is something we've always encouraged people to do. It's a really simple device, and they're free as long as the customer calls to get a free water checkup. We show them the device and how to install it. We've been doing this since 2007. We've distributed over six hundred and seventy-seven of them. For a residential customer, it's about sixteen percent savings on their water bill during the winter, and for dedicated irrigation meters, we've been seeing about thirty-six percent reduction in water use, so it's a really great, simple program.
People have asked me, can you use these under foliage of a tree? Or does that sort of preclude their effectiveness?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that would probably impede the, the use of it. You want to make sure it's out from the gutter, as you can see in the picture, out in the yard as much as possible. If it's under a deciduous tree, I think it would work because the leaves wouldn't be impacting it, but if you have a wide leaf over it, or a really robust tree, you'll want to make sure it's somewhere, and the cord's generally very, very long, so you'll want to make sure that you're able to wire it somewhere that it can really get some real And we're here for any questions.
Thank you. I don't see any speaker slips, so it's to the council. Any questions or comments? Mr. Hart?
I just had a thought. Going back to the seven-year chart that shows the water supply, I think there might be a little glass-half-full, glass-half-empty kind of look at this, because you mentioned specifically the shortfall that's, that's on those charts, you know, as something of concern, and obviously, it is of concern, but I do think it's important for the public to understand, too, that we do have, you know, multiple plans to fill that shortfall. That, you know, we have the desal plant that is scalable to a larger capacity. We have been successful historically so far in making outside water purchases, and we have been able to get conservation from our residences. And so that, you know, I think that is not what we're going to end up with as a shortfall. We're going to have, we have a strategy to fill that shortfall, and so I think, I just wanted to give a little different perspective on the way that may have, have been interpreted as folks were listening to that when you made that point. And I know that's not what you intended, but when I heard it, I thought, hmm, that sounds as though we don't have a strategy, but we do, and I want to make it really clear that we do, and have consistently all along been executing a long-term strategy, and I think that is something that we have been very fortunate to have had staff that thought ahead about this, developed a very comprehensive plan, looking ahead to get us to the place where we are today, where I think we're in better shape than many of our other neighbors. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, a comment before I ask my questions, and that is that also, if we look out to 2017 there, we have, we have more options in terms of, we're getting a little more conservation now. We may be able to buy a little more water. We may even get a little rain next year, and all of that might prevent, let's just say, the bad case occurs and we go ahead, which is a likelihood, go ahead with the desal plant, but we don't have to scale it up. That's a, that could be a win going down the road. That's at least a, it's, it's a half-step win. If we don't have to go from three fifty, three thirty-five-hundred to seven thousand, that's a cost that we're avoiding if we're doing all these conserving and cautious things, and aggressive things in terms of purchasing water and, and obviously activating our well field. There are, there are reasons to even be nickel-and-diming this thing right now. So then to my questions. First of all, you didn't mention the, the high school well, and I know there was a pipe that was proposed to be built there, and I don't think we got a timeline on when that was, was going to be happening. And so, do you have any thoughts on that at this point?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the, the plan for year five includes both Alameda Well, which you know is under construction, and the high school well coming online in water year five, and so I don't have the current schedule in front of me, but we are working on the timeline of getting that pipeline in and the well improvement's done.
Can you provide a timeline on that, on, at our next update, please?
I will bring it to Water Commission Monday.
Right, well, good, okay. And then, second of all, I believe it's this month that the USGS review of our groundwater was scheduled to be completed. Have you heard back and with, with the sense that maybe it wasn't going to be exactly this month, but can you comment on that? Do we, have we gotten any, are we staying in active communication with the USGS folks?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, yes, we do have monthly phone calls with USGS. The recent work was conceptualizing the simulations that they'll be running, so they're working out the kinks on the model right now, and we will hear early next month how things are going, but that, the remaining work on that is to fix the bugs on the model that they're working on right now. Then they'll run the simulations, analyze the results, and then write the report, and I expect that all of that work would be complete by the summer.
By June or September?
Hard to say, but I'm, I'm shooting for June. I'm asking for June.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And I'd appreciate it, at least, not every time, again, I like what you did today where you, you, you edited down, moved along. I appreciate that, but that is something that perhaps every other month you could give us a, a little note on. And finally, is there, again, for, for future reference, there may be a, a more potential yield in Basin Three, even if it's just for irrigation purposes, and we haven't heard any talk about that, and so I just want to throw that idea out there as another, again, as, as the years go along, we're going to be looking for every option, and Basin Three total, total storage capacity, and of course, USGS may be helping us with that a little bit, and it may be worth investing in a, even if it's a well for irrigation purposes in, in Basin Three. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank, thank you as always. Great. All right. Any council member committee assignment reports? Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I was at ABR yesterday where they moved forward the, I guess I would call it the Great Wings Project at the airport. It's pretty exciting, and the closer you get to it, the better it is, so hard to get a raise out of those folks, but most of them were really enthusiastic. The other thing was that I attended the CDBG interviews the other day, and my thanks to the dedication of that group, they start at four in the afternoon and go till eight at night every time. And secondly, they were really, you know, they listened really carefully and were encouraging people, thank you for your extensive report. What we're really looking for is, is results, and that's something that Mr. White and I, and I think the whole council started emphasizing a few years ago, and they've taken it to heart.
Great. Well, they're doing it as we speak right now, so, there we go. Ms. Murillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The youth council is busy working on your initiative on anti-bullying, and they're doing a, an event with Pacific Pride about not bullying LGBTQ students. I attended the breakfast of the AOK after-school program, and our library department and our Parks and Recreation Department were represented there, working on this really well-organized after-school program, AOK. And then, really fun, the Rose Society planted a new rose. So, the mission doesn't just have the rose garden, they have these secret gardens that are behind the fences, and I got to go to their huerta, that's what it's called, and they planted a Lamarck rose, which is from 1830. So this, this garden only has trees and plants from nothing, nothing later than 1834. If you can, like, think about that a minute, I don't know. They blew my mind. Really nice people, people who are into roses, and so we had a very nice ceremony. Thank you.
I want to thank the organizers and the over six hundred volunteers countywide for the point-in-time count that happened last week. I was up early both mornings, and the application for the Vulnerability Index is an app. We, I was able to use my smartphone to collect the data, then it just gets uploaded to the database, gets off my phone, and it was tremendous. I interviewed four different individuals, and they're all different stories, and the data, we should hear more within a month to six weeks about how many homeless people we saw in a point-in-time count throughout the county, how that relates to two years ago, and all the details behind that, but tremendous, tremendous support from the community in making that happen. And, and I mentioned the, we already mentioned the Water Quality Control Board hearing, and then the Film Festival so far, I think, is going very well, thirtieth anniversary, and-
then the Film Festival so far, I think, is going very well, 30th anniversary, and people are, seem to be enjoying Santa Barbara, so continue to do so through Saturday, and that's really exciting to see, so. Okay, and we have some closed sessions. Go ahead.
Item 16, conference with city attorney regarding pending litigation entitled MHA Garden Street Owners Association et al. versus Trabuco General Incorporated et al., SBSC Case Number 1374378. Item 17, conference with city attorney regarding anticipated litigation, Government Code Section 5495 6.92 and E23, significant exposure to litigation arising out of the city's subrogation claim against Renee Savalio to recover property damage costs paid by the city of Santa Barbara. And item 18, conference with city attorney regarding anticipated litigation.
Okay, it's possible we have a report out, but, and if not, we'll adjourn from closed session, and we'll go to closed session. Okay.